We open the meeting and invite you to join with us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In case of fire, there are two ways that you should exit the chambers. To my left, you'd exit through those double doors, turn left, walk down a flight of stairs, and outside of the building. Or perhaps the best way is to exit to the rear of the chambers. In either case, once you're outside of the building, please walk a safe distance away from the building. Will the Vice President please take the roll?
Chairman Durin.
President.
Commissioner Ballard here. Commissioner Falk. Commissioner Sarno. Commissioner Longi.
Here.
Commissioner Lefakis.
Here.
Commissioner Lad.
Here.
Commissioner Gregory.
Yeah.
Commissioner Drynan.
Here.
Commissioner Alamo. Excuse me.
Commissioner Drynan will be sitting in for the absent Commissioner. How many we got?
Two.
Two. And Ronald will be sitting in for the absent Commissioner. Let's try to see. Who've we got? Oh, yes. Two. Great. Thank you.
One, two.
Okay. For the announcement prior to, item 10 on the agenda has been withdrawn. That's a special permit to add a sale of pre-owned vehicles, which would be at 3 Palumbra Drive. If you were here for that meeting, that particular meeting has, or will not be held because the application has been withdrawn. Items, and I know some of you are here for this one, items B and C under 10, which deal with the Thompsonville rezoning regulation and zoning map. Due to a posting error in the J.I., by the J.I., we cannot hold that hearing tonight. Legal requirements dictate a certain number of days, and those days cannot be held because the J.I. missed by...
Missed by one.
By one. However, you're going to give the sheet... Rebecca Blatt.
Rachel.
I'm sorry. Rachel Blatt will be giving us an update to the commission. If you care to stay and hear the update, you're welcome to do so. But again, and if you have, if you can't make, we intend to, or I hope the commission will schedule this again for two weeks. However, if you can't make this meeting in two weeks, we do accept written letters or...
Just one.
As long as they're signed with a name and address and mailed into Rachel or the planning office.
My card is on the desk.
I'm sorry?
Copies of my card are on the desk for anyone who wants those.
Okay. And we do accept them, and they are made part of the record. I will read the names and if they're general comments, but I'll read the names into the record so that you know we have them. And each commission member does receive a copy of that in their packet, as you can see the books that we have already. So if you can't make the meeting, we do welcome written comments.
And we will do an update.
And, yes, Rachel's going to give us an update.
Mr. Chairman, will you mean the motion to continue or table, or it just is not on the agenda, or...
I'm sorry. Well, when we get there...
To remove it from the agenda?
When we get there.
Okay.
I just wanted to tell the people that we're not doing it in case they had, I guess, better things to do. Okay. So, anything else I missed? Okay.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for this meeting, for the Thompsonville rezoning. Will we be notified if she already has our information by email when the actual meeting is?
I... Well, I tell you what we can do is if I get an item to take out of order right now for both those two items, we can set a date for them, and then you'll know. Thank you very much. No, okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to take agenda items number... A second here. 10, B and C, out of order.
Second.
Okay. The motion is to take items 10, A...
10, B and C.
B and C out of order to set a date for the new hearing.
I'm in favor.
Okay.
Will I also push the closing date?
Yes.
Yes. All in favor. Okay. Depends your wish.
I'd like to make a motion that items 10, B and C, that we just agreed to take up now, that we table or continue them until next, the two weeks, which would it be tabling or continuing?
No, it's continue.
Continue. To continue these items.
It would be tabling, right? It'll be tabling until...
They are not, they are not, they are not properly notified, item, so we need to renotice and everything. So I think it would be table.
Yes.
And renotice and set the date for that to be...
Yes. To table, to table those two items, renotice them for hearing at the next meeting, which would be June 19th.
Okay. I have, are we in discussion?
That's my motion.
Second. So motion's made, seconded to table and here on the 19th.
Be scheduled for the 19th. Yes.
Okay. Will we be ready if we have things that we want to discuss and change, or are we putting it back on the agenda with everything the way it is now? I think it would be that we would be re, if there are changes that the commission recommends to me, that I would make those updates and reissue that all to the town clerk and everything, I think would be the need, what we need to do.
And we'll have a chance to do that at the end of this meeting when you present an overview of this.
Right. So that, since we can have, we can discuss.
Remember, it's a town, it's a town hearing, and there's no, there's no dates.
Right. There's no 35, 65.
Right. Since it is a commission initiative, it can continue on. Right. So what I was just trying...
Then you wouldn't discuss it.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out, because I'm thinking, as the board, if there were things that we wanted to discuss, to have you fix, then...
You're not going to do it tonight.
Well, we can, I can give my report, which is an update of where things are at this point, and I believe that you all can respond to my report. We cannot open it to the public at this time. But we can accept comments from the public in writing after this.
You have comments to her reports.
Yes, we have, we've had in planning meetings in the past. We have another planning meeting next Thursday. Would it be possible either tonight or next Thursday to make...
Well, that's what I wanted to know, like, should we bring them up at the planning meeting? And he's saying the 19th, so would we want to be farther? That's the question. No, we need to be now because the, if we're going, I would like to, we have to republish to, I would say if there's any changes, I want, they need to be republished to the town clerk in advance, and I believe it's a 10-day in advance if it's a change. So we need to republish basically tomorrow or Monday.
So we could treat your presentation as one of our planning sessions we've had on this in the past, even if it's done tonight?
Well, it's, it would be my report, so it's just like every week where I give my report. You all can respond.
Let's just set the...
But at this point, we need to set, it would be setting a date.
There's a motion. There's a motion for that effect.
Motion's to set the date.
Right. So that it would be, I would say that we would make, if there's going to be comments from anyone who did tonight.
Everything continues the same way as it always does.
So we can get it to the town clerk, so that the public has it available to review.
So the motion is for the 19th. Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Motion, yes. Thank you for the second. All in favor, the 19th? It's unanimous. So, okay, so this is on the agenda for the 19th. Okay. Moving on, approval of minutes, May 1st.
Motion to put the third minute.
Second.
Motion's made to approve and seconded. Any additions, errors, or omissions?
I just have one.
Yes, Charlie.
On page three, paragraph two, states, Ms. Beasley stated the bushes were lowered to 18 feet. I think she meant the solar panels. I think that's what she said, too.
Yep.
That's the only one I found.
Page three.
Panels. Page three, paragraph two.
Panels were.
Okay. Well, I don't see that, but that's all right.
Is that here, Charlie?
Okay. Anybody else hearing none, all in favor, accepting with the addition? Thank you. Unanimous.
No, abstain.
I'm sorry, we're supposed to take roll, or do you...
Yes. Well, if it's, yeah.
Okay, let's take roll. Do it right. China move too fast.
Chairman Durin.
President. I'm sorry, yes.
Commissioner Ballard here.
No, yes, yes.
It's four, four against.
It's yes or no. Yes or no.
Oh, yes. Right. Okay. Yes. Commissioner Falk. Commissioner Sarno. Commissioner Longi.
Abstain.
Commissioner Lefakis.
Yes.
Commissioner Lad.
Yes.
Commissioner Gregory.
Yes.
Commissioner Drynan.
Abstain.
And Commissioner Alamo.
Five, four.
Five.
None against, and two abstentions.
Abstentions.
I should have taken the roll the same way, but for...
It was unanimous, so I think we'll be, we'll catch up.
Okay. Uh, okay. May 15th, regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 15th meeting?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any errors, additions, or omissions? Hearing none, will we take...
Commissioner Durin.
Four.
Commissioner Ballard, four. Commissioner Falk. Commissioner Sarno. Commissioner...
You don't need to read their names if they're absent.
Four.
You don't, well, go ahead if you want to.
Commissioner Longi.
Abstain.
Commissioner Lefakis.
Abstain.
Commissioner Lad.
Four.
Commissioner Gregory.
Four.
Commissioner Drynan.
Four.
Commissioner Alamo. You don't want me to call the names of the people who are not here?
You don't, that's not necessary.
Okay. Then I won't call them.
Those are two abstentions?
Yeah.
Staff reports, town attorney in writing. Item number four on his list is, that's a ZBA problem. It doesn't give the address. Is that North Maple Street?
280 North Maple.
Okay.
So just the, for the recording, that was 280 North Maple is the response.
Okay. I was just wondering. Okay. Any questions for town attorney through Rachel? Hearing none, moving on, then, reports from zoning enforcement officer, who happens to be the blight officer, too, so she can do both at the same time.
What I have today is primarily what you have in your packets, so those are the active cases for the month of May, I believe, yes, the month of May.
Sorry, though.
Have any questions about those or any others, I'll do my best to respond.
You can see the department's been very busy.
Yeah, I did. But I did have a question, because I, I know that this has been a problem for the town and the residents, and we have a lot of chickens on here that are roaming around. We're working on the thing. What are we doing? Are we just putting them on the list, or are we sending them letters, or...
They're just like everything else. Like, there are pieces in our zoning regulation that does allow me to enforce no chickens at this point in time. So I investigated one of them, the King Court, and have had the owner respond that those chickens have been relocated, and I investigated another location, could not find anything in a drive-by, so the next step is to make a phone call.
Okay.
So, they are, they are being attended to amongst the other pieces.
No, what you're referring to, I think, is we've been trying for, I won't say how many years to pass something to allow...
But that's not what I was asking. I was really trying to find out if, when somebody's reporting them, if they were going out and actually checking on them and sending a letter and trying to address them, because we don't have regulations right now.
And we, well, we do.
You do.
We do. It's challenging. It's mostly around the, the outdoor space.
Uh huh.
So chickens naturally need a pen, safe haven from weather, et cetera, those sorts of things. And in looking at the regulations in a residential zone, we don't have something in there that allows for that.
Right.
As well as some of the other specifics related to agriculture activities.
Okay. And next, next week is actually when our consultants will be back for that planning workshop, and the public is always invited to attend those as well, and that is going to be to discuss their first, first round on, on the chickens.
Is that going up on the website?
Right. Yes. And what about all these people that are getting letters? We've got some, well, we've gotten some phone calls and people who have inquired just want to know when we get to them. Okay. When we, when we're at the point of drafts, you know, those with the consultant, and so we've got a list of those folks in the works as well.
And when I speak to these individuals, I am sharing with them that it's not allowable at this time, but we are in review and looking at opportunities where it makes sense.
Okay.
For chickens to be an option.
Okay.
And they're invited to come to that workshop.
Okay.
Or to make comment.
Okay. Any further questions? You can see she's been busy. Okay. You can see the problem again, starting up already is grass on a major.
I have a question about somebody's blight calls that the banks have and/or... A question about somebody's properties that the banks have and/or. Is there not, is it not possible to attach the title or to put a lien on the property even if the banks have it?
That's a great question. I should have the answer next week. Where I'm actually meeting with the maintenance, property maintenance folks and Courtney to go through, Courtney Hendrickson, to go through the processes that we've been using along the way, where hiccups are, what other things we might be able to do to help move the blight issues for foreclosed properties along.
I was talking to the Attorney General last week, and he said that we should be, after our state officers, our senators and representatives, to make some ordinances, because the state of Connecticut has nothing that he can enforce to require the banks to do these things.
I did see, I don't know what the details are, but I did see a question on a survey that Casio put out this week about position for whether the members support a statewide blight ordinance or not. So that's something they're discussing.
Our local representatives are, I spoke to them, and they're starting, they promised me they would start working on some legislation about that. They don't believe it'll pass because they think the bank lobbies are shooting down, but they at least will try.
Mm-hmm.
But I would, that was his recommendation, that the town lien them, lien, and when the title tries to get registered, the fine, they can't get registered. If the banks or whatever sell the property itself, then the lien has to be paid to the town.
Mm-hmm.
It may take them 10 years, but...
Sure. We'll start this conversation on Monday, and how about either the next meeting or the following one, which I would be attending. I could give everyone an update.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, unless you have something you want us to do.
Stop them by the office. Lots of things you could do.
Oh, yeah, I know. Okay. I know.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Assistant Town Planner?
Okay. So, before we get into my update on the Thompsonville Residential, I want to start with a little bit about earlier this week and to clear up some of the confusion. I think there was a little bit of confusion over what was going on this week in terms of our meetings, and I just want to clarify that for everyone on the commission and then also for the public. We have, over the last couple of weeks, it is now summer. We're getting a lot of applications. We've got a lot of large and also very small items. Where we started with this is that we had several site plan reviews that we were looking at that are all very small, would seem to us very small projects and time-sensitive projects, that we were hoping, because we knew that Thompsonville Residential was going to be tonight, that we could set it up so that, one, we would get all the information to the commissioners so that you would have time to review, and then also take care of them in a manner that would address the time sensitivity for, for some of those folks who are applying. There was a lot of confusion around this issue. I think we've learned a lot from the experience of this week. One thing that we've learned, I just want to let everyone know that we did follow all of the required post notices, postings of notices, and, you know, everything was in place to have a meeting, but obviously, we, you know, I know there was some misperceptions, and we don't want ever, ever to have that situation where the public doesn't feel that they are invited. Of course, the public is invited, and we want them to know what's happening. So we will no longer have ever proposed meetings during the daytime. We are going to always, if we have special meetings, do them in the evenings, and I know there was some confusion even with the commissioners. We will, you will now always get an email from me if we have a special meeting in addition to what's in the packet. So, you know, we've learned a lot from the week, and that's sort of how we're going to address things, and, you know, we do have to build up a system for these things, and we are working on that. So that's what's coming up in terms of those pieces. In terms of tonight, we had, again, with these time-sensitive smaller projects, followed up with the town attorney to make sure that, you know, if it was possible to have them heard this evening, and we did get some follow-up from them. We posted everything, our entire applications to be received list on our agenda, so that way, and we posted that yesterday before 5:00, so that way we could be heard and everything was, is properly posted. So I just want to read you what he said, so that it's for the record and everyone has it available. So the two topics of concern were whether posting the amended agenda with the town clerk on the, and on the town's webpage by 5:00 PM on the 4th was satisfactory notice, and whether the commission could act on items that are site plan reviews on tonight if they were posted in time. And the short answer was yes. And to read you the description of the everything. Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-225(c) requires that agendas be posted in the office of the town clerk and on the town's webpage at least 24 hours prior to the scheduled start of the meeting. As shown on both agendas, the PCC's June 5th meeting will start at 7:00 PM, and the amended agenda was posted at 5:00 PM, 26 hours prior to the start of the meeting, thus complying with the 24-hour requirement. Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-7d, requires that notices for public hearings be posted twice, the first between 15 and 10 days prior to the day of the hearing, and the second no less than two days prior to the date of the hearing. However, public hearings are not mandated for site plan applications per Section, Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-3g. Accordingly, it may be concluded that the amended agenda has been properly posted, and the commission may, at its discretion, act on site plan reviews listed on the amended agenda. So that is where things are with those pieces. When we found out about the J.I., this is just one last piece, we found out about the J.I. today is basically because of the Memorial Day holiday, their deadline changed, and we were never notified of that expanded deadline, so we posted at our normal time, and it was rejected because it was too late for their publication. Noting that, July 4th is a Friday. There is no possible way for the commission to make their decision the night of the 3rd regarding new applications and put a public hearing on for the July, the second meeting in July. So anyone who's got public hearings, we're going to be working, looking through our list and seeing where we can help people out. If anyone has a new public hearing that we would want to start on the 17th, we would need to have all their material to you so you could accept that application next meeting. So that way, you know, now that we know about the holiday situation, we're going to work on that and make sure that we take care of those folks hopefully in advance.
You mean the 17th of July?
The 17th of July is our second meeting in July.
Yep.
We would typically post it the Friday after your first meeting, so you guys make the decision. We submit the information to the J.I. the next day. They post it in Saturday's paper. They are going to be closed on the 4th. So are we. We can't get to them that information, even if we send it at midnight on the 3rd, they're not going to get that information in time to post it for their weekend paper. So that's why we're going to have to work with folks to get them in a little bit earlier.
This is not new. It's happened before, with errors, posting.
So that's how it happened with the posting. Now, to give you all an update on where things stand with the TVR, because I did have a meeting with the public, with the property owners of the properties that would be affected, and we, I want to give you all an update on sort of where things stand, post that, and see where you guys, what you guys think, and if we can make some changes, and then get more public feedback on this. So if I could have my tall friend.
Yeah.
Is it on landscape?
Yeah, well, it was on before.
It was hanging before, and now, now...
Oh.
Is one of the techs, would you come down and help get the cap off, please?
There, he's coming.
Huh?
Yeah.
It's coming. Oh, uncrucially.
So to, while that's hap... Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So while that's happening, the cap, we capped the projector and, can't get it off. So we had a, I met with the property owners. We sent a notice to every, to the addresses that we have on record for all the properties that are going to be directly affected. There's 235 properties. We invited all of them. I think we had maybe 30 people?
Thank you very much.
There we go. And I think it was a very, very productive meeting, had a lot of good feedback, I think, both things people liked, things people didn't like, and that sort of informed the changes that, you know, since we had a last workshop on this topic, some of the changes that we've seen. So to run through everything, just to give everyone an update on what has happened and how we've gotten to this point, that we had, this is sort of all coming out of the Thompsonville zoning study that was done in the course of 2013. This report was issued in August, and we had several, a couple workshops leading up to it. There was a February 23rd workshop that, the consultants came down from Boston. It's the Cecil Group who produced this report, and they did a tour of the village and a public meeting to sort of get some ideas and gather feedback. There was a second presentation in March, sort of an interim draft report, and then the final report was issued in August 2013. Since then, planning and zoning has met in workshop sessions to discuss ideas and get feedback basically from the commission in relation to what the consultants presented. So we had our first meeting on this topic in September, 2000, September. We had another meeting in December, and then this spring, we had one in February, one in March, and again in May. And May 21st was the day that I met with all of the property owners to get their feedback on these topics. So to get everyone else up to speed, since we are on TV, the goals for the zoning revisions are two pieces. One is to set some zoning that's going to maintain the character of the neighborhoods. We, the goal here is that, not to change Thompsonville, but to put zoning in place that's going to keep the character in place and always be building upon what we already have, because Thompsonville has some really great assets in terms of its built environment. Second is to direct private investment to be, again, once in character, and then encourage folks to invest in their properties. And why now? The Thompsonville reinvigoration effort is really a town council-driven effort. Council has agreed to a capital improvement plan to really make some strong investments from the town side. And then there are some bigger forces here at play. The market is really transitioning towards these walkable neighborhoods like Thompsonville. There's some proven success in Bigelow's success as a residential property, those reunits are generally full and have been mostly through the recession, and then the North New Haven-Hartford-Springfield rail is expected to be coming here 2016, 2017. So, we're getting, really gearing up for that date, so that, you know, if rail comes, and hopefully it's when rail comes, that the zoning is in place to really support development around the station. The consultants proposed three new districts, we decided to tackle them each on their own because there are very specific components to each of the three districts, so we don't want to take them all at once. We're going to be starting with the Thompsonville Village Residential District, then there's the Thompsonville Mixed Use District, and the Riverfront Transit-Oriented Development District. We've actually changed these acronyms from what the consultants presented originally, and that is so that we can sort of build our vocabulary for the entire town, so that if we add a mixed-use district in Hazardville or around the mall, that we have that language there in place already, and we're growing our consistency. And then, you know, even though we have one district that's particularly called out for that Transit-Oriented Development District, really the entirety of Thompsonville is going to be within easy walk of the transit center. So, the Thompsonville Village Residential District is the one that we are in the works of taking up, and will go, as was decided earlier, that it will go to the public hearing on June 19th. And again, we are looking for feedback, so if anyone out there is listening, please take my card and give us some comments in writing, and we will be happy to get them to the commissioners. The boundaries of this district are going to be, what is proposed at least, is Alden Avenue on the south. No, the pressure doesn't work. Alden Avenue on the south, the railroad on the west, the cemetery, and Lafayette Park, sort of making an arc around the top. The Windsor Court property that's owned by the Enfield Housing Authority is not considered to be part of this district, it would stay residential 33 like it currently is. And then also the properties that face Enfield Street would stay in the business districts that they are. And since, again, this is, this entire project is about maintaining the character, the character of the district is really the focus of this. We are looking at, this is a neighborhood in the Thompsonville Village Residential, it's a historic, it's a walkable neighborhood, there's a mix of residential types from single-family up through four-family housing, and there are a couple scattered commercial spaces and some really good access to open space. There are four major components to the proposed rezoning, a reduction down to 8,500 square feet, reduced setbacks, and increased lot coverage, setting of some design standards, and then an allowance for those two-to-four family residences. And again, our, we'll go through each of these in turn, and we're going to run through this a little bit more quickly than we would, we'll go next week because this is that update, and get to some of the more meat of the conversation. So, we'll be reducing the minimum lot size down to 8,500 square feet. Right now, the minimum lot size in this area is primarily 33,000 square feet, that's about an acre. Most of the lots do not have an acre. More than 90% are actually legal non-conforming lots, which means that they are under that 33,000 mark. This is actually, these are some of our numbers, that 8,500 really comes from the average lot size. This neighborhood, the average lot size is 8,757 square feet. The idea of setting the average, the minimum lot size close to the average is that as lot, if lots ever merge or unmerge or split, that you're aiming for something close to the average. So, that's where that comes from. Reducing the setbacks and increasing the lot coverage, this is probably where the property owners are going to see the most new opportunities, is that when you reduce the setbacks and the lot coverage amount, it allows for the decks and the pools and the sheds and the additions that have not been possible because of the lot coverage amount that we've set right now. So, in terms of just reading through the numbers real quick for everyone, most of these properties, I'm going to go from the legal non-conforming down to what we, what's proposed. Legal non-conforming is what most of these properties are going to be following right now, that's the second column. So, on the front yard setback, it would go from 35 to 10. Side yard would go from 10, would stay at 10, so 10 to 10, if it's legal non-conforming. The rear yard setback is going to go from 35 down to 10, so it's going to allow for you to cover more of the lot, or to utilize space closer to your property lines than it's currently allowed. Most of the properties in this district are already a lot closer to their property lines than we would allow by zoning, because there are these historic structures that were built before zoning was ever thought of. On the next levels, then on the other pieces, the density would be set at 10 units per acre, and that's basically allows for one to two families by right, and two to four, three to four by special permit, and we'll get into the details of that, because that's where there's going to be some discussion, probably. On the lot coverage, it would go from 20% to 85%. 85% is what's currently allowed in the Thompsonville Village Center District, and 20% is what's allowed in our residential districts. 20%, most of these houses are bigger than the 20%, so 85% is going to give them a lot more room for making changes. What we discussed at, the commission's last discussion on this was, what about impervious coverage? We have not typically, up till now, we have not had an impervious coverage maximum in our residential zones. You can pave your entire lot, you can't build on your entire lot, but you could pave on your entire lot. So, what was proposed at this point is to go to an 85% cap max on that, so that you can, you can pave a lot of your lot, but you have to make the choice now between, are you going to build the deck, or are you going to do the patio? You can't do both, you can't do the deck and then patio the rest of the yard, you have to leave a little bit of green. And then the height, again, would go from, actually increase again from 35 to 40, and that's to make it consistent with what's already on the ground. The design standards, there's a few things here on the design standards. One is, the first one is that any new parking would need to be designed so that the parking is in the side or the rear of the lot. You couldn't, you, going forward, you will not be allowed to, you wouldn't, under this proposal, would not be allowed to build a parking area directly in front of your house. Anything that's currently like this stays, it's grandfathered in. But if you're building new, you would have to build new on the side or in the back. What we did to help with this a little bit is that we also, because we know that that takes a lot more space if you're going around to the back, is that the recommendation right now is to allow for tandem spaces, so that if you have, if you're giving two spaces per unit, you can box your, either your roommate or your spouse or whoever it is into the space. So, like in this situation, you would have two D-ded spaces to Unit B, and Unit B would have one in front of the other. Also, what was discussed is expanding the design, the design standards that we've set for the Thompsonville Village Center Zone to this part of Thompsonville. So, this is the Appendix B-2R zoning regulations, it's already been adopted, and it would just be expanding the area at which that applies. And there are some specifics that I want to talk through as we get further on. The last major change here is going to be that allowance for the two-to-four family residences. Right now, most of those two-to-four family are legal non-conforming. What this is going to do is make it a little bit more encouraging to keep those two-to-four families in place and to expand upon that. Right now, as you can see from our statistic here, 68% of the properties currently have more than one dwelling unit, and our zoning only allows for one, one single-family house. So, this is really, again, about making the regulations match what's on the ground. When we do this, we're going to be setting two different standards. One is going to be that two-family would be a by-right use, which means you do not have to come see planning and zoning, you go straight through the Building Department and get all of your proper zoning sign-offs from the ZEO. It would, rather than coming through to the commission for a special permit like it is in the rest of town. And then the multifamily would be a special permit use, and that would be coming to the commission for that permit and that approval. To do this, we're going to do a definite, we have, before we get anywhere into this, we need a definition. We don't have definitions of these things right now, so we need to establish them. The first is we need to establish a two-family residence. We've changed this from, what was it called, the duplex residence? Duplex in real estate terms can mean either two-family or a unit that's got two floors. So, setting it as two-family really clarifies that information. And then on the multifamily side, that's anything three and up. And to read you all the specific definition here, this is one, because we've changed the language in this a couple times, to read the two-family, "A residential use consisting of two dwelling units sharing a common foundation, in which each unit is totally separated from the other according to all applicable building code requirements, except for a common stairwell exterior to both dwelling units."
Question, the word exterior, how is that used here? Because I'm thinking a stairwell exterior to both dwelling units, you mean on the outside of the building?
No, I mean that you, that they have to be separate, that the stairwell has to not be connecting the two units, that you have to, I can look up for, maybe we do need a different word there?
Well, and I had, I had, because stairwells are not the only thing, sometimes it's an interior hallway that separates them. So, that was in my little notes here, that it should have been either stairway slash hallway, and-
An interior stairway?
Yeah, there's an-
Because an exterior, to me, means a fire, a fire escape or something, I don't know, I just-
Right. So, what it was intended to mean is that you would not, you cannot have the stairwell connect, if you've got the second floor unit, you don't need to, you have to not be, second floor unit has to have access directly to the ground.
Right.
So, you can't go through Unit 1 to get to Unit 2, you need to have that separation.
But I just know, like, the existing multifamilies now, typically you go up the stairs, enter a door, there's a hallway that goes to one unit, you go up the stairs to the second unit, so there's hallways and staircases, it's not just staircases.
So, yeah, so maybe what we need is a different, to simplify that and say, like, the access has to be separate from both units.
Units.
Yeah, that's better.
Question, when you say multifamily, I gather that's a general term, meaning three-plus, but in this particular district, it would mean three or four?
Right. So, that's, so what we need is, we don't have a definition that's town-wide at this point. So, I think we need to establish that anyway, and that's, you know, because we do have multifamily in other parts of town, and I think we need to give them a real name. And so, what this sets is basically that at that three-point, you are a multifamily.
So, it could be five in some other district, not this one, perhaps.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Right. So, on the multifamily definition, the difference is there, and we'll have to deal with that stairwell piece, again, is the, that the three units do not need to be on the same foundation, it's three units on a lot. So, if you have two units in one building and a rear building that's a converted garage or whatever it is, that that could be an option. In this district, now this is the part that's in that district, so in this district, basically we would be adding a component to our explanation of what two, two-family units, and it's section, it would be Section D is the added part related specifically to this Thompsonville Village Residential District. It says that two-family residences are allowed by right, again, bypasses the commission, go straight to the Building Department, and get zoning sign-off through the zoning enforcement officer. All units would have to have, to meet, get that zoning enforcement officer's signature, the units would all have to be at least 600 square feet. You can only have, one driveway would be, only one driveway would be allowed by right, adding a second driveway would require coming to the commission for approval. Parking would follow the standards set forth before that we talked about the tandem and the, not in front of the house, and then also the parking standards would be using the reduction in parking count that we already apply in Thompsonville, which is a minimum of one space per residential unit, supposed to two units, two spaces per unit minimum that we apply throughout town. So, this is if you add a unit, if you take a one-family house and split it into a two-family house, you would need one, at least one parking space per unit. And then the last component there is just that the two-family residence could be designed with either one on the first floor, one on the second, or one on the right, one on the left. On the multifamily, this is where there's been a change since you guys saw it last, and that's, or at least this is a proposed change from what you guys last saw. And this is in relation to feedback from that property owners' meeting that I had on the 21st. So, this is what it was. What it was before that property owners' meeting was the following. In the Thompsonville Village Residential District, residents with three or four dwelling units are allowed by special permit, subject to all applicable building codes, and they were following standards. Piece number one is the one that we're, I think we needed to address the most, and we'll get into that in detail. That's property owner must be a resident of the property at least six months and one day of the year, and that's a residency standard that is applied by the state. Option two, and then the next pieces down are, maximum dwelling unit density of 20 units per acre shall be maintained, meaning that if you wanted to have a third unit, you need to have at least 5,445 square feet of a lot size, and then if you wanted a fourth unit, you would need 7,623 square feet on the lot. And that's to maintain a set density standard that would be applied throughout the district. Now, some changes. One, I think we should be consistent and keep the pieces, this is part A, would be that we keep the pieces from the two-family and apply them also to the multifamily. So, in the Thompsonville Village Residential District, residences with three or four fam, four dwelling units are allowed by special permit, subject to all applicable building codes and the following standards. So, we're going to keep that 600-square-foot minimum, we're going to keep that requirement for second driveway cuts coming back to the commission, and we're going to keep the parking standards from Thompsonville Village Center District, that one-per-unit standard. This is the complicated one, and I'm not going to read the whole thing because I've got it in bigger type, broken up, that this is an alternative idea to that residency requirement, and we'll go back, come back to that in just a second. And then on the last piece, the last piece would stay the same, that dwelling unit density of 20 per acre, so you've got those lot size minimums for the three and four. It's, so it's 10 per acre by right, 20 per acre would be the special permit. So, now, to explain the residency piece, I'm going to go back just so I can read the intro piece. So, the intro to this would be, this is, again, still proposed, still up for discussion, and I think this is where the public is going to have a lot of comments, and hoping we get some written comments and people back here next time. So, it reads at the beginning, "Property maintenance is a high priority. As such, property owners must comply with one of the following three residency requirements. Should a property owner's residency change, a modification to the special use permit shall be required. This requirement shall be effective upon the sale of a property or the addition of a new dwelling unit after whatever effective date these go into place." So, this would not affect our current investors, it would affect who they can sell to. So, anyone who currently owns, they own. Anyone who, when they sell, or when they decide to divide into another unit, then they would need to come in for that special permit, because we need a trigger set basically for when that's going to kick in.
On these changes that you developed from the hearing, would you put them on a separate sheet so that I could-
Sure. If you actually jump to the memo?
Beg your pardon?
Jump to the memo.
Okay.
So, a question, a question, this is attempting to give some relief to a current owner from having new restrictions, but I gather from this that this would propose that upon the sale of the property, the new owner would be subject to those new restrictions. So, if the attempt is not to affect the value of a current owner's property, the fact that when he sells, the new owner will have new restrictions on him, and from the point of view of a buyer, that would reduce the value, so that would affect the current owner's value.
Right. So, this is, this is why-
No comments, please.
So, this is exactly why, I know, I want to explain the breakdown of this, because what was originally proposed was that the homeowners would have to, the new owner would have to be a resident. What was brought to us by the, by the property owners is that that significantly reduces the market. So, we proposed a version that would reduce the burden on those new, on those new owners. That was the goal of the new, of the new text. And I, unfortunately, those folks are leaving, because I think they would actually like this version a lot better than where we were.
Right. My only concern is that in attempting to address that concern, the fact that these new restrictions would apply to a new owner will in fact affect their, the current value of their property, because in resale, it would, the new owner would be, a new purchaser would be willing to pay less because of the greater restrictions.
Right. So, I want to explain the restrictions, because I think that these are pretty reasonable. The new version, I think, I agree with the others, now that I've heard that feedback, that reducing it only to, that sale, that pool of people that they could sell to, to only people who are willing to live in the property, is, that's a really high, that's a really high barrier. So, that's going to limit that pool of folks who are interested in buying those properties to a very small number. So, the idea was to broaden it up again, and unfortunately, they left, because I do think they would like this version better.
And the other thing is, is I just want to, I, I participated in almost every single one of these meetings, and I personally was troubled by the fact that this last meeting, which was the most well-attended, none of the board was there to offer any of these things, and that's why I really didn't want personally to go forward with this without having one more crack at it, sitting in a room and discussing it, without having to hash out something, because I also feel like it's a taking, and I don't think that it would pass our legal department.
Well, yeah, but you're going to have a hearing, and then you don't have to vote on it, I hope you're going to have another workshop.
Yes.
Because you're going to gather an awful lot from the public hearing, which you can't have. She's had a public hearing, which she wants to include- She's had a public hearing, which she wants to include some material, that's fine, but it was, it was a hearing that we probably shouldn't have been at, because, unless maybe one could have gone, but you can't have four of us there without-
But we've had all these other meetings, we've had-
They've been special meetings, you're right.
Right, they've been workshops.
And this was not a special meeting, this was an informative meeting.
But why didn't we have that way? I mean, that's what I don't understand.
Because you only would have had this. What we're trying to do now is get public input, and that would be by this public hearing that we couldn't have tonight. After that, we will have to have a workshop, where you will include all of what she's giving you, and all of what you get from the public.
Okay, and I think that the public, and this is why I was trying to get this out before, we're going to go through a hearing process, and then we're going to have another workshop, that's not, how do you have a hearing, and then a workshop, and then back to the hearing?
You have to, because you'll have a lot of, because it's a public change, and you have no deadline.
So we're open, we don't have to do this.
We don't have to act at any ti-, I mean, there's no deadline for action on this.
Right.
The, I think the ones we opened the public hearing, we've opened the public hearing, and I think we have to continue with, with public hearing meetings each time.
And we can't have any workshops, right.
I mean, that the public hearing, the public has to be involved in that conversation as we move forward, which is why we wanted to have a meeting where I could talk to them first, and get their feedback, so we could, you know, report it back-
That's what she's doing.
-one step ahead. And we really wanted them to give, get, the property owners to get a crack, you know, before we got to the, any time, before there was any possibility of a decision.
But these few comments that all of us are making just tonight are helpful, because they eliminate certain aspects that we need to consider as we move forward.
That's right.
Right.
Because this is not a set deal-
Right.
And it's going to take, it'll take quite a while, that's where we're doing it, piece by piece, not, not all the changes at once.
Right, we, yeah, there's, we want this to be a very open, long process, I mean-
In essence, you're caught a little bit between a rock and a hard place, because we're, as a commission, motivating the, to do this as soon as possible, but at the same time, we want to take the time to do it, and we have an infinite amount of time, there are no deadlines, to do it right, so it's a balance.
I mean, I, I want the public to want to do this, not to be having one component of it, that they fight the whole thing because of one section, that I think is probably a huge problem, and I, I would have liked to have known about the meeting, been at the meeting, and had a workshop.
We were notified of the meeting, it was in your last packet, we gave the dates, and that it was held at the Bigelow Commons.
As far as absentee landlords or requiring landlords to be on-site, I'm not sure that works anyway, I think the BRIGHT ordinance would work a lot better.
Right.
So I can show you properties in town where the landlord lives on the same street, doesn't maintain his rental property down the other end.
And that was definitely discussed as well.
Yeah.
So if I can just present what the alternative idea was-
Yes.
Because I think that that would be a lot more productive of a conversation, and I want to give you a little bit of an explanation as to why we presented three ideas, basically, that would build upon each other, rather than a strict, you must be a resident, because again, you know, having, you know, we never got, I don't think it ever came up in our previous meetings, that this was a takings issue, but as soon as we had that, we started the process for preparing for that, I was like, of course this is a takings issue, and we don't want, we don't want to end up presenting anything like that. You know, we, we do want to take that into account, we know that that's not going to be something that will fly.
And these three options you're going to mention, they're any of the three, not all of the three?
Exactly.
Thank you.
It is any of the three, in that it would, I think what we would need to do is, basically, it's, it's a residency, you know, ladder. So option one would be that you live on the site. If you live on the site six months and a day, you could still be a snowbird, but you live on the site, that you've met the residency requirement thing. Option two, you don't live on the site, but you live in the area. The requirement here would be that you would have to give your informa-, you would have to provide your contact information to your tenants, a phone number and an email address, I think would probably be appropriate for all of these three, we have, I think we'd need to specify this a little bit better. But give your contact information to your tenants, give your contact information to the housing code enforcement officer, and give your, post your contact information in a common space on your property. The reason I, for this idea is that you live in the area, but if your, if your tenant doesn't know how to contact you, the line of communication is broken. So the housing code enforcement officer ends up involved in situations that could have been solved with a phone call. If the tenant has the information, and the, and the housing code enforcement officer has it, it's always going to be a full circle, everyone is aware of, everyone else involved, the line of communication stays open, and if the housing code enforcement officer has that information, he can call the landlord and say, "Look, your tenant called me, I think this could be solved through mediation, I don't think that this needs to be an issue, talk to your tenant." So the idea is that everyone has the full information. So you can live, we set it at 30 miles as the idea right now, that covers Hartford, that covers Springfield, that would be that you live nearby, you live within a phone call's distance, and you have to just be reachable. Option three, you don't live in the area, you get a job transfer, you own a property, you get moved to Florida, you get moved to Florida. So, option three is that, you know, you have now left the area, you own property, but we want to make sure that you're maintaining your property, and the idea here is that then what you would produce is a property maintenance agreement. The details of that, we haven't set, and, you know, you just have to have an agreement with a property maintenance company that is local, so we set that as a shorter, as a shorter distance. You don't live in the area, you need a property maintenance company that's going to be closer than our residence, so it's 15 miles. So your property maintenance company needs to be based 15 miles from the property that is being maintained, and you have to have a capital reserve fund, so that if the pipe bursts in the middle of the night, there is some capital in place for fixing the pipe on the property maintenance company's end.
Who's going to be the depository of that fund? Is it going to generate interest? Who will get the interest? Who will control it? Who will decide? Is like a bond?
Nope, it wouldn't have nothing to do with the town.
It's similar to a bond, but a capital reserve fund with whom?
With the company.
Okay.
So you have to, you would have to have a property maintenance company working on your property.
Okay.
And that company, we need to have access to some amount of capital, and we set it as, you know, this could be, item for discussion, that 10% of your annual rental income would need to go to your maintenance company, so that if something happens, that they have some money available to them. Town does not get involved in that. All we would need is the agreement, and that the agreement would be recorded on the land records, so that there's a record of, of who to contact again.
My preliminary concern on this is that it's a government agency requiring a private citizen to enter into a contract with a private agency. Supreme Court just ruled on that about a year ago with regard to the, the individual option of Obamacare, and that was a big tussle, so I'm just wondering if we're treading on that same ground again, where a government mandates that a private individual must enter into a contract and pay another private entity, is that legal?
I would have to check that, I think, so where, to explain where the town attorney's office fits into this process, they will look at a near-final version, so they don't want to get involved in every single, you know, they want us to get to a point where they're pretty set, but if we have a specific question like that, we can ask a specific question. So I think that's one we can definitely ask, is this, does this work?
That's one I'd like to ask fairly early on, before we get too far on this.
Because, I mean, and the other thing is, is who keeps the capital reserve fund?
That's the property maintenance company, nothing to do with the town.
They do now, when they-
I mean, that's, I looked at a few property maintenance agreements, and this is, I mean, it's a pretty common, you know, you look up a, what is a good template for one of these agreements, and it includes a capital reserve fund, because, again, the pipe is going to burst in the middle of the night, and you need that money, you need that cash on hand. So that's the idea, is that basically that you, rather than something happens, you have a property maintenance company, they can't do anything without getting in touch with you and getting a check written, that they have some capital to work with.
So again, my concern there is that's dictating the terms of a private contract between a private property owner and a private insurer or property management company. I'm not sure that a government should be in a position to dictate the terms of such a contract.
So what you're saying, even though it's a common practice to do that-
It's up to-
We shouldn't be putting it in our regulations.
Yeah, that's, that's an item to be negotiated between the parties of that contract, the property owner and the property management company. If the property management company says, "We want a 20% reserve," and that's the best he can get, he has to go with it. If there's another one that says, "Zero is good enough, we'll trust you, and you can send us the bill," then that should suffice, but I don't know that it's the government's responsibility to dictate that term of a private contract between two private entities.
So I think that's, that's, particularly, those two points, I'll take to the town attorney, because I want, I want a legal eye on that.
Would it, would it be just to strike the fact that they have to have that, and just that they have to contract with a property management company?
Right.
Because you know the property management company's going to want-
That's, that was my first concern, can you force a contract, like the individual mandate in healthcare or not? And then the second one is, if, if that's legal, then can you also then dictate the terms that you must have a 10% reserve?
Oh, you want both questions answered.
Yes.
Can we mandate that they have?
First one, exactly, can you even mandate a private, you know, a private relationship between private, and then can you dictate the terms of the reserve?
Right. Yeah, so that's, again, you know, I think that's something, we'll get that answer, because I think we're going to need, we're going to need that, and I don't know, again, you know, we know that this is going to take a lot of conversation, once we open the public hearing, we'll have, it'll just be a continued public hearing until we resolve everything.
Could we, and should we, I don't know, are you at the end of yours?
There's a couple, just a couple more.
Okay, go ahead, I'll let you finish.
But I don't know if you want to pause me and-
No, I have no question, it's just, I had something else I wanted to ask.
Because I know with the order things, it's-
No, go ahead.
This is the longest item. So in blue here, this was not on what you guys got in your property, in your binders, but the blue text there is basically just that, again, it would be additive, so that contact information piece, that the property maintenance company would need to add in their contact information. So rather than it being the owner who posts their contact information, the property maintenance company would need to post their contact information. So whoever's maintaining the property, and is that day-to-day phone call, "Oh my gosh, the stove's not working," that's who the tenants need to have access to.
Okay.
So then, we'll skip this sort of section, I'm going to just breeze through it, these are the line-by-lines, adding the text to the table, there's one change that I think we'll need to make, this is the blue, so multifamily, the definition would go from not both units, but all units. Text changes by, this is our introduction, this is our purpose statement, the idea here is that we want to introduce a, a broad goal, so that if there ever has to be interpretation on anyone's part, this is the statement that you start with. So the general purpose statement would stay the same, with a reordering, so that our first piece is really that ensuring quality residential development, and that's not last, it's first, on our priorities, and then on the priority list for, our purpose statement for this district is that, the Thompsonville Village Residential District is a means to preserve the existing density and encourage rehabilitation and homeownership in the area of Thompsonville North of Alden Avenue. These are some minor text changes, and sort of the introduction piece, we would add the table, so adding Thompsonville Village Residential to our table, there are some particular footnotes here, this is, the last one on this list for the commissioners, is the one we discussed at the May 8th workshop night, and that's the maximum lot size shall be 17,000 square feet, commission may increase lot size beyond 17,000 square feet by special permit pursuant to the terms that we, the special permit process that we set for that. And, you know, that was something that was discussed, is that, again, it could be, lots can be over 17,000, that would be fine, but it would need to come to establish a new lot over 17,000, so if your lot's already over 17,000, it does not apply. If the lot needs to be, if you want to establish a new lot, or expand a lot beyond 17,000, you would need to get a special permit. And this is the particular text, so we already have a special permit reduction in lot size for Thompsonville Village, Village Center Zone, it would be applying the same information, same standards to this area, and then adding in the piece that in addition to that reduction down to 4,500, we would be adding that also for the expansion beyond 17,000. Our design standards, this is the actual text, one piece that we need to deal with when it comes to the design standards is Revite's role. Peter and I have been talking, that Revite right now, all, all exterior changes come back to you.
Yep.
So in the village, in the Thompsonville Village Center Zone, if there is a, an exterior change that would not normally go to the commission, someone changes their porch, they, you know, shift a couple, you know, they shift, they paint it, whatever it is, that would not come, typically those things would, if it was a normal, if it was a residential 33 district, someone paints their house, they don't come to you. But the way it's written, and not even just paints, they change the windows, typically those design decisions are, they happen just with the residents. In the Thompsonville Village Center Zone, any exterior change goes to the revitalization committee, then it gets kicked back to the commission. So adding, expanding upon that process to a new district that's basically all residents, seems like a lot of work for someone, if we want to make it easier for people to make exterior changes. So what we were recommending is that if we're adding in this district to the, to the area that's covered by Revite and the design standards, that we allow for the, for Revite to make their recommendations directly to the ZEO, if it's applicable.
Who's going to decide that?
No, I thought we were going to do-
Well, it'd be, the kick would be, is it a project that would go to the planning and zoning commission, like a change in the footprint, or is it a project that goes straight to the building department?
Because we had experiences before, and we did a redesign of something that they'd expected, that was on that apartment, when you redid the front.
Yeah. There were, there were reasons of why-
I think it still needs to come here, basically.
So, because what we're talking about is expanding upon them.
I thought we were going to do an overlay district on the whole thing.
We are, and that's, and that, the thing is, is that to do that at the same time, and shift the entirety of, it could be too much.
I think the overlay district would take care of it, I really think it belongs here. I appreciate their input, and I think their input should continue, but I think, let's say, having more people look at it makes it a better deal, really, and it shouldn't take any longer.
So, yeah, so I think, so what my recommendation is, I think maybe, and then in this point, is maybe not expand at this time, and wait until we do the design overlay?
Yes.
Because we have so many residents, and if they come in and they just want to make that bathroom addition on the ground floor that we're going to allow for with this change to the lot coverage, that if we expand this design overlay view at this point without, and making it that two-step, Revite to commission and back again, like, it becomes a lot of meetings for a resident to have to go to.
So they don't need to go to Revite, come right here.
Well, that was the other thing.
Right, and that's what we need to do with the design district, is that it would come straight here.
Yeah.
So maybe that's what we would want to do with this stuff.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So the question is, do we want to, I, my, do we want to establish that at this point and pause? Because I think, I don't know that we'll be ready to make decisions anytime soon if we're developing the design overlay district language simultaneous to establishing the new district. So my thinking is, is that we, you know, take that design component up, you know, after we get a district established that we can apply it to.
Well, that's whatever, yeah.
That's my recommendation.
So that'll come out?
So that would come out.
Yep, the zone, that, so-
Yeah, that was a question I had, too.
Yeah.
So the Revite piece would come out, that if, we would just be establishing the zone.
There was another step in there, would you explain the other step in there that you have?
It said, "Or zoning enforcement."
Or zoning enforcement officer, what was the thought on that?
And that all comes out.
Yeah, okay.
Right, because again, where we are with Revite is that Revite, only any change that goes, any exterior change, if it's a window, goes to Revite and then to you guys-
Right.
-which typically, if we're, if we're trying to encourage our residents and our property owners to make investments, that's a lot of steps for replacement of a window.
No, that's right.
So take that part out for now, and then when we do the design overlay district, it would include probably the Thompsonville Village Residential area.
Oh, yeah. Okay, is that it? One more?
And then I had a few things that I know there are questions on, and I can get to them, but if you've got questions, let's take them and get to the other folks as well.
The only thing is, from comments I've heard already, can we set up special meetings specifically for this one item? Because you're going to have, you had input tonight from you, we're going to get input in two weeks.
One week.
One week.
So that's not, right now, this is not on the agenda for that planning workshop at the moment.
So-
Yeah.
It's the most important planning thing we're doing, so why not put it on the agenda?
I'll tell you, what we have on the schedule that night is that Cecil Group will be presenting their first draft of poultry, and commercial vehicles, and medical marijuana. So it depends how long you guys wanna stay.
This is pretty important, and you know, one more meeting before, two weeks from now, could shorten the overall timeframe for doing the whole thing.
You probably, again, I don't know. As when we're doing the master plan, you're gonna be required to do many more meetings than just twice a month, because as you say, this is important, and it's important to the people of this district, it's their life. So, you either gotta put the time in, and do it right. So all I'm saying is, whether you add, you don't have to do the whole thing, you could do pieces of it, as far as we could go.
At the workshop.
Maybe you could just address the questions we've had on the multifamily occupancy requirement, just that, to try to get the, do the hard one first.
Yeah, so I'll see, and again, the part of it that's gonna play in here is that, those questions we send to the town attorney, we need to give them time to do their research. And especially, cause I know what you brought up in these examples, that's very new, that's very new law.
Take, take the items you have, we'll do those first, and then work into this. And then, after the public hearing, reserve a room, so we can have another special meeting just for this, to-
To continue discussion?
Continue, go over, well, yes, because there'll be a lot of change.
I have one other corollary to the start.
You have to find a date, and it'll have to be-
But again, I'm not sure, I'll check with the town attorney, cause I'm not sure, once you open the public hearing, and the public gets involved, I think we may have to continue to always have them be public hearings, so that the public can respond to you all, at each opportunity.
Specific, yeah, specific, right, we could do it that way.
Which is fine, I mean, I think that's, at this point, we may need a lot more, to know their thoughts.
Well, it's a work session, because we have to incorporate the material that they're gonna give us, and discuss it. We can allow them to talk at those meetings, but it's more of a work session for that.
Yeah, so I'll check with the town attorney exactly what is the-
That's the way we've done before, on-
On plan of conservation?
Yes, the long ones, that we've had meetings in between times, you have to.
So I'm wanting-
We can't do it individually, and we can't, we can't do it without a public notice.
Right.
They're welcome to come and hear our discussion, but we do keep the hearing open, we have to, well, I forget how we did it. The hearings were-
We did the solar panel-
Just kept open, yeah.
Yeah, and we-
Solar panels are precedent, when we did that.
And then when we did the-
Multifamily for Mayfield.
We did something too, for like a truck stop thing, I thought.
Yeah, that went for several times.
And that went, was kind of a debacle, because we started having hearings, and then did all this work, and then voted down. So, that's why I was trying to think that maybe it would be better for us to be able to just have a conversation.
Well, you can at the workshop, and they're here, yeah, we have to have, we have to be able to talk, and get, simulate all this into, into a package.
I think next week's agenda, planning agenda, you should have, allow for some amount of time on this, whether or not the attorneys are ready with their opinion, we can discuss other aspects that may occur to us over the next week.
And give us procedure, because we're not gonna do this in one, one open hearing.
But if we can't do that, if we can't discuss it at a workshop-
We can.
Why can't?
It's not a workshop, it'll be, it'll be a planning meeting, where this is the only item on discussion. It's not a public hearing, it'll be a public workshop, just like we've had public workshops before, already on this. People have been invited, it's been on the agenda.
Posted, yeah, we posted the agenda.
And we can announce it here, that we're gonna have one, and welcome to attend.
Right, we've been announcing for months that we have these meetings.
So, that's, but just check, make sure we're doing it right.
I'll talk to the town attorney, and see if we can figure it all out.
So, plan somewhere-
Yeah, I think it's gonna take us several meetings more to get through all this, and hopefully everyone comes back and gives their thoughts.
Probably go past the August recess.
Especially, well, you probably won't have a recess in August. While we haven't before, I don't know if there's been a recess in August for quite a number of years. People have gone away, and the rest of us have been here.
About 200 hours built up.
We have had a recess.
It's been scheduled, but then we sometimes have meetings.
We've had meetings.
Sometimes we've had meetings, maybe one in August.
So, schedule what we can, when, as we go. And, I know, right after the public hearing, we're gonna have to have a special meeting with this item, the only one on the agenda. And it shouldn't be one of the two, one of the two regular, cause you don't wanna-
Hold up everyone.
Hold up everyone else.
I have one other wrinkle to pass on to the attorney on that, the multifamily tier four unit, and that's this, if, if there's a legal triplex here, or somewhere else in some other zone, that an owner is renting as a triplex legally, and then, in this new district, if someone converts to a triplex, and they have these owner-occupant requirements, is that equitable under the law, to treat the two differently?
Okay.
Yes, that one I'll get right away.
Rachel on this? We've got, you really have a lot of work, we, we've done a lot of work, she just added, again, and it's, you know.
This is good, this is really good work, I mean, it's moving the ball forward, so.
Yeah, and it's gonna take us time.
That's why we did not try to attack all at once.
Right, so that's why I think we take the design district part out for now, I think would make everyone a little bit more at ease.
Okay.
And I just wanna, I'm gonna quickly run through, cause I know there was a question on lots, on unit sizes.
Yeah, but I, I think that, I asked the question, but I think I made a mistake, because in the accessory use, it was four to 750, and I had the 750 in my head, but the 600 was our original smallest, so.
So actually, I wanted, so I have, actually, I thought of two, there are two things that I just wanna touch base on, and to throw it to you guys, we're gonna think about it. Cause again, we're gonna have a lot more conversations about this. The first one is, is that what are we gonna do about the legal nonconforming? A lot of these properties are not at 8,500, 8,700 is our average, but, as in one of our earlier discussions, you guys had asked for a breakdown of what the other items are, so here's the numbers. There are 105 lots that we're-
They aren't switched to here, or are they?
There, there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so here are the numbers, 105 lots out of the 235 are between 4,500 and 8,500. 28 lots are under the 4,500, but they are pre-existing, so they're legal nonconforming. And then 15 lots are over 17,000. So that's what we've got for a breakdown. In terms of, so what I propose is basically that, cause we have, if you take a look at our chart here, the first two columns are our R33, and then our R33 legal nonconforming. So if you're a lot that's not 33,000, there's a lot of those in town, there's a slightly modified version of the R33 district standards that apply to those lots, so it's, you know, a little bit smaller setbacks, is basically the key to that one. So, what are we gonna do for those lots that are under 8,500 in Thompsonville Village Residential? My recommendation at the moment is that we just, same, same setback, same coverage applies, which is about where it is with the legal nonconforming R33s. It's a little bit, the R33, you're talking a lot larger lots, and a bigger deviation between what was the allowed, and what is the legal nonconforming. So that's something to throw at everybody to sort of think about. And then on the unit sizes, it's, right now it's proposed that 600 and 600 be the net living area, so that's internal to the unit, is our net, so that's, doesn't count the outside walls, that includes just what's the living area. And that's pretty much, what I did is, I ran through, just real quickly, everything else we have, and 600 is pretty much where we are, so we're at 600 in our conversions, 450 in our assisted living, 600 in continuing care, 600 in housing for the elderly. And these, some of these do vary, some of them say minimum floor area unspecified gross or net, some say net, some say gross. So there is a little bit of deviation in some of these. Senior residential, it's 900, and those are our single-family subdivisions that are seniors. Our temporary conversions for those accessory apartments is the 450 and 750 max. The multifamily housing district, that's where Mayfield's going under, is 900 minimum, going up to 17,000.
Well, those accessories, it's not 400, it's 450, yeah?
Yes, 450.
Okay.
450 is our minimum for the, for the accessories.
Okay.
Okay, I, I had one question, or one comment to make, just so that you could maybe fix it. In the actual zoning editing, you said all applicable building codes, but in the definitions, you, you used the word according to all building code requirements, so we would wanna make them match.
All applicable building codes is probably the better.
Right, just because, when you're taking out a building permit, it depends on the year you take it out, as to what code applies. So, it might, you might be on a previous code, and the code has changed, and the code is constantly changing.
Yeah.
So, you'd wanna make sure it says the applicable building code.
Okay, so we'll make that change, cause that'll be consistent, and I can, I'll take a quick look and see if we've got that language anywhere else, because we might as well be consistent throughout our regs, if we can.
Right, and I noticed it was, it was different in both spots.
In two places, yeah, and we don't wanna add to any inconsistencies.
Right.
Anything else? Okay.
So that's what I've got.
Thank you.
That's the longest report yet.
Oh yeah, it is, but it made some changes, and we've got to consider them. And again, I think the best way is if we can add them at the end, we get done what we can do, and do some more after the public hearing. Set up, but set up a special meeting just for that, a workshop, public, a workshop for the committee on that.
I'll figure out what that is. Okay, so I think we're up to correspondence?
Public, not quite.
Oh, public participation.
I'm trying to find my spot here, so you're gonna have, somebody took, yeah. At this point in the meeting, Planning, Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning, zoning, and infield from anyone who's present, provided no one may discuss a matter of business at this time. It's already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission at this time? Anyone like to address the commission at this time? Last call to address the commission at this time. Hearing none. Correspondence, just quickly, you had the magazine, Planner Magazine, you had Capital Region referrals. You notice that two of ours are up there. We don't have to redo that, do we?
No, so the things that CROG, so I actually got our response from CROG. The only thing CROG is gonna review are things that take, affect areas within 500 feet of another town.
Yeah, they do.
So, this district is not within 500 feet of any other town, including Southfield, we checked the river, it's longer. But, what they do, what they did, is that they do have to look at is actually the definition, so adjusting those definite, those townwide definitions of double, two-family and multifamily, they will review that again, so I will send that back. And they get 30 days, typically they, they follow the same timeline we do in terms of their reviews, but we'll pass it along.
Okay, I noticed that Long Meadow has started to send us their hearings, do we do reciprocate? I know they asked us to, after our other hearings.
Yes, I don't think we've, we have not been, but I think we do, we should, it would be better, it would be better to.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, and I, and there's, with the one that's coming, that's on our schedule for the next meeting, that's near East Windsor, I do need to get in touch with, have not had the chance, but do you wanna get in touch with Lori over in East Windsor's Planning Department, and get them all that information too, because it's better for everyone to be on the same page and know what's coming.
Right, well.
There's another reason to, seeing the Long Meadow activity, and that is, if a casino goes in just over the border from here, Long Meadow would be affected, and we should be mirroring or looking at what they do to see if we should do something similar.
Yeah, so Long Meadow is one of the towns, I think, that would, is part of the casino agreements?
No, they're trying to be.
They're trying to be?
Yeah.
Oh, they haven't actually gotten it?
They appealed what they've offered, and they're trying to, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know, I'm curious to know, I'll be curious to see what that result is, on their end.
But I think we should reciprocate, I didn't know if, I, I think they'd sent us the last hearing too, and I wondered if we were, and make sure we do.
Yeah, I'll check, cause I think, I'll check in with all of them, and maybe what we should be doing is just sending them everything, and see if, that way, they have our agendas.
East Long Meadow, when it affects border, does us.
Okay.
But, Long Meadow never had, and they're apparently starting, no matter what they do, so, which is good. The next was, you have the Federation Planning and Zoning, and it's interesting, what makes a storage shed a building? Commissioners' correspondence? Anyone?
I just wanted to comment on the Planner Magazine, it's almost like a tutorial on a lot of the stuff we were discussing this month. Including the bike racks, and a whole lot of the things we've been working with, there's been, I don't know if you, if staff gets a copy of that or not.
I do have a copy, my time for reading-
Yeah, I know that.
To be kinda limited.
There's a lot of resources in this particular issue, about stuff we've been discussing, so you might wanna scan it.
Good.
Bond releases none. At this point, let's see, we have old business, none new business, applications to be received. You have some SPRs here, and as we go through here, you might wanna consider-
We have to open this public hearing that's withdrawn, or no?
I-
I think you have to-
Yeah, we do have to open it, is there any, well, I announced there had been withdrawn, that had been posted, but the legal ad wasn't right, so you can't really take-
No, on the-
You can't open it.
No, that's true, because it's, it's in the same boat, because it was posted the same day.
It's a legal ad.
Okay.
So it would have been in the same boat as the Thompsonville pieces, that we couldn't have opened it, but they withdrew at the same time anyway, so, okay.
So do we need a motion, or do we just move on?
Move on.
Well, it's withdrawn.
Yeah, so we will, we will, I think we do need to publish that they withdrew.
We can accept, we can accept withdrawal without prejudice, if that's what you wish, and you can refile again.
No, I'm just asking because it was a public hearing.
You have to accept the withdrawal. So, I'll make a motion to accept withdrawal without prejudice.
I'll move to accept the withdrawal without prejudice of Public Hearing 2794, item 10A on our agenda for tonight.
Second.
Nick.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take the roll, or?
Chairman Durin?
Four.
Commissioner Ballard here. Commissioner Longi?
Uh, four.
Two and four, I'm sorry, four.
Four.
Okay, Commissioner Lefakis?
Four.
Sorry. Commissioner Lad?
Four.
Commissioner Gregory?
Four.
Commissioner Drang?
Four.
Seven, four, none against, none of saying. Okay. Yeah, thank you for reminding me that it has to have been accepted. Okay, now, on the application to be received, do we go through this? Some of these, I would like you to consider taking up tonight, because some were, they're SPRs, they don't require a public hearing, some of them are, I guess, well, so you can-
I can give an explanation, an intro to each of them.
And, so SPR 1624, a review to locate a long-term storage container at 375 North Maple Street, six months, property located at 440, at our 44 district map, 78. Lot 13, Kenneth Kukunas, applicant owner.
I would recommend taking this one up tonight, and we'll go through the whole list, and then if there are decisions to take anything up, that we would be adding them to the agenda, to, to be heard. So in this case, they, there has been a, a zoning permit has been granted to have it for the first 30 days that they've been there, they need commission approval to keep it on site for six months while they do some cleanup work. So I would recommend taking this one tonight.
I'll make a motion that we take this one up tonight, SPR 1624.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded.
Lori made the motion?
Yeah.
Just, okay.
Take the roll.
Yep. Chairman Durin?
Four.
Commissioner Ballard, four. Commissioner Longi?
Four.
Commissioner Lefakis?
Four.
Commissioner Lad?
Four.
Commissioner Gregory?
Four.
Commissioner Drang?
Four.
Do we go right into these, or no?
No, I'd say we go through the list first.
The whole, the whole application to be received, SPR 1625, elevator in St. Patrick's Church.
I would recommend this one for the 19th, or the July 3rd.
Cause we don't have the packet on that one.
And it is, there's a footprint change, I think it's, you'll see, there's a-
July 3rd, or?
July 3rd?
On the 3rd?
Well, I- Okay, you wanted to do a motion?
Is there a general agreement? I don't think, typically we just do this as, by agreement.
Okay, we don't do, okay.
For the scheduling.
Yeah.
By 3rd?
Okay, yeah, SPR 1626.
This is a site plan review to add a second driveway cut on Prospect Street. The Town Engineering Department is doing work on this street already, so it's currently being dug up as we speak. So, I would recommend taking this one up tonight, so that the work can be coordinated.
I'll make a motion to take SPR 1626 up tonight.
Second.
Okay, I'll take the roll.
Chairman Durin?
Four.
Commissioner Ballard, four. Commissioner Longi?
Four.
Commissioner Lefakis?
Four.
Commissioner Lad?
Four.
Commissioner Gregory?
Four.
Commissioner Drang?
Four.
Three, seven, four, none against, none of saying. Let's see, turnover, 1627?
This is a site plan review to replace the roof material at the Anfield Square, and this is that, the entrance that's next to the Radio Shack. And again, I would recommend taking this one up tonight, because it's a smaller component of the site.
Make a motion to take up- Make a motion to take up SPR 1627 tonight.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Discussion? Call or roll?
Chairman Durin.
Four.
Commissioner Ballard, four. Commissioner Longi.
Four.
Commissioner Lefakis.
Four.
Commissioner Lad.
Four.
Commissioner Gregory.
Four.
Commissioner Drayner.
Four.
Okay, 74, none against, no abstentions, SPR 1628?
This one here is a, it's a site plan review to make entrance, alterations to the entryway at 35 Manning Road, which is the former Hallmark Building. It's to re, it's new doors, new windows, and a new patio area. I would recommend, for this one, either the 19th or administrative approval if it was, if it's acceptable to the commission, but probably the 19th. I think it's a small, it's a smaller project that could be, a decision could be reached.
No urgency on this one, there's not time of the essence on this?
No.
This one, okay.
So we could do that with, what, the 19th?
And I'll say the 19th, so we've got on the schedule right now for the 19th, since it's not here, is.
I'm sorry?
Just to remind everyone of the schedule for the 19th already, is that earlier tonight, we decided to take, the commission decided to take up the public hearing for Thompsonville Village Residential.
Okay.
There's the public hearing for the 92-unit senior housing project that was already scheduled, and then a site plan review of a change of use for a hair salon in Thompsonville Village Center. Again, that was already scheduled for the 19th.
Okay, so we can, okay.
So those are three that are already on the schedule.
Okay, so that's no good.
Make a July 3rd for that, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, go ahead. Public hearing 2795?
That's the hair salon.
This is one that cannot be taken up tonight. Public hearings cannot be taken without proper posting. I would recommend probably the 3rd.
This has to be posted, it says public hearing here.
Yeah, that, now, yeah, now we switch, that one's a public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry, so that has to be posted.
So that cannot be tonight.
That's right. Okay. What else, well, the others are SPRs, are the 3rd, right?
Right, so that, right now, that's, that would be our first new addition to the public hearings for the 3rd. I do anticipate that both the ones that we would open would probably be more than one meeting, the ones that we would be opening on the 19th. We've got a pretty full schedule for the next few ones.
Okay.
So the 3rd for that, to start?
XSP 131602, Brayden Park, site plan modifications.
I would recommend, they, this is the basketball court area that was approved last year. They're proposing some modifications. This is, it's gone through the leisure, the leisure committee, I might not be saying that correctly. They would act, the engineers are, have been working on this, on this proposed modification, and they would request either the 19th or the 17th, because the engineers who've done the work will be away on the 3rd. So July 17th is my recommendation, since, again, it is a town project, there's, it is an exempt file.
They have all their stuff already, or?
We do have everything already, but with our tight schedule.
Is this something they would want to use in the summer, so they wait until July 17th, that means that they would lose?
They're not ready.
They're not ready.
They can't, they, it's, they said either next week or, next meeting, or the 17th would be their preference.
Okay, 17th.
So since the 7th, I mean, we've got a full boat, so.
17th.
Now, the next one, how do you want to do that?
So this is, um.
It's not an, it's not a XSP, I'm sorry, it's not a SPR, it's not a public hearing.
This is our new process, basically, for tackling minor modifications that come in in any form, is that we do not sign off on them, we send them to the commission, so this, I think, should be discussed tonight, because they need sort of a, we need direction from the commission on, on this topic.
We already have the package on this one. My only concern is there is a kind of a, by the way.
If we're going to discuss it, we'll do a discussion if we're going to do it tonight.
Okay.
If we're not doing it tonight, then?
Well, she, she.
Recommend.
It's administrative approval is what she's asking, so.
This is a minor.
We always do administrative approval, so I guess we are going to do it tonight. So if you're going to do a discussion.
Well, aren't we discussing whether or not we do it tonight?
Yes.
Well, you have to hear what she wants to do.
I think we should look at the list of modifications that have come in, and take a look at it, and decide what happens after that, and actually go through the process. So I'd say we go through this list and, and have that conversation.
It is not a public hearing. It's not an SPR.
Question is whether it's administrative approval, or are we here it tonight, or are we here it later?
We hear the reasons for.
Well, you hear the reasons, yes.
Right.
Whether it's administrative, or whether we want to have a hearing about it.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, so this would be to actually talk about it, as opposed to just.
Okay.
So I'd say we should talk about it tonight.
So we'll do that after the.
After the others.
After the others. Okay, so let's backtrack then.
Don't we have to vote on that, or no?
Well, she always has administrative approval, she comes.
Those are the ones that we always do the ask.
We just voted on everything else, but we're not voting on this one.
Because it's not on, it's not on things to be.
It's not an application.
It's not on an application.
Yeah, and this is, we're, this is one of those things where, and I've spoken to a few people, we, our modification processes is something we really do need to develop more fully, and I do want to devote one of our fall workshops just to this topic.
In the meantime, you're erring on the side of talking, talking about it instead of administrative approval, that we're going to discuss whether we do either.
Well, that's what you decided after some of the problems that we've had.
Right, right.
Right, everything comes back to the commission.
You would like to help her out.
Yes, exactly.
Otherwise, she does it, period.
Absolutely.
So that's where we are. So, okay, so back to the.
Okay.
Start at the list.
Okay, all right, let's see. Too many flipping.
We'll go back to SPR 1624.
16, okay, is applicant here? Or, okay, you want to explain it then, if the applicant's not here? Oh, he is? Okay.
Have a seat.
Yep, just your name and address, so we know who you are.
Hello, I'm Ken Vinsounis, I'm living at 31 The Laurel's, Anfield. I gave you a packet on it, I trust everyone has seen it. Here to answer any questions, I think it's pretty self-explanatory there, and just a simple project, I hope.
I did have a question. I saw in here that you were thinking about building a house. Did you know the timeframe that you were thinking of doing that?
I've engaged an architect, we're working on the design. I would like to get it started in the summer and have it closed in before winter.
Okay.
It's pretty ambitious, but that's, that's what I'm trying to do.
Well, I asked the question because I saw that the extension was going to be, or you were looking for a request for six months. But typically, people come here because they're building a house and they need extra time. So I was just wondering if we, if the board decides to go ahead with this, that we might want to put in something about, if you so choose to build a house and you have an active building permit, then maybe that's what we would allow Rachel to administrative approve the extra time if that was the case. So you wouldn't be back here again.
Okay, actually, I intend to build a barn probably first.
Okay.
I'll house all the things.
Would you use this same storage structure if you were, for what you need to build a house or the barn? Would it have a dual purpose?
Not so much. I mean, if I get a contractor to build that barn, they'll, they'll take care of their own materials, it won't be part of their work.
So you wouldn't have the need to, what we're really saying is, maybe you want more than six months if you use the same.
Actually, my application said up to six months, I don't think it'll be that long.
Okay.
And you don't think you'll need it for the barn or the house, so there's no reason to keep it there for those purposes?
Only for the barn, and I'm determined to have that done before six months is up.
Okay.
Okay, so there, there is a piece of our regulations, and I'm going to jump to the section where I think you actually would have to start the house before you can start the barn, because.
What a country.
That you have to have a principal structure to have an accessory structure. And barns being sometimes a farm structure, it's unclear about barns.
Well, that, I was going to ask that same question, because the piece was 18 acres, which would be the size of a farm, technically, yes.
That question is not the subject of tonight's SPR. Whether you milled the barn first or the house, that's a separate issue that can be addressed later, we're just talking about.
Well, that's not ours anyway.
No.
Yes, exactly. We're just talking about six months.
She's saying is, is, he's saying, I'll just clear it, he's saying that he won't need the storage.
Right.
Trailer when he builds his barn. But if he has a problem building the barn before the house, he might need the trailer for longer than the six months.
So when you give him the extension automatic.
Right.
Give her permission to build an extension.
Well, that's why I was trying to make sure that he's not back here in six months.
Thank you for that.
So when we figure that piece out, yes.
Okay, I'll be back to you on the details of that, I guess.
Yeah. And just to clarify, these are container, it's a container that would sit flat, no wheels, so it's not a trailer.
Right. Actually, this was perfect with the pictures.
It is.
Because you, we knew where it was going, what you were doing.
Bet you can't see it from the road.
Yeah, right, there was, that was all the.
Instantly, you say the container's going to be 450 feet from the road, your house is going to be 450 feet from the road, is the house going to be where the container is?
No, in fact, it's out of the way, so it doesn't impinge on that.
Just carries.
Yeah, you can't even see the trailer.
No.
Out in the woods.
Okay. So on the memo that you all have in front, that you all received regarding this, this proposal, and if anyone in the audience or public, we always have a public copy available here as well, the conditions to, I have several that I recommend that we take out of this, because they don't apply to a trailer.
Yeah.
And I want to show you what I was proposing to remove from our boilerplate list, so those are the ones that are crossed out with a strike through.
Then you have to renumber because of that?
And we'll renumber, of course, yes.
Fire department had no problems with this. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, Rachel?
Nope. So if I, do you want me to add one, that administrative approval, if an extension is necessary, would report to the commission?
Yes, yes.
I do have one question for the applicant. On your site plan application, you wrote in, where it says the undersigned hereby permits town staff and commission members to enter on this site, you said for a period of 30 days only. Is there a reason for that?
I understood that the commission would go and see the site and see what the situation was, and say, yes, that's approved, and I didn't want continuous rights to go there if that was the intent.
We didn't want to drop it at the same, okay.
Yeah.
He doesn't want company.
Anything else? Well, what do you want to do?
I'll make a motion to waive the full submission requirements of Section 9.10.2, because the commission finds that the information is not necessary in order to decide on the application's conformance with these regulations.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll the call.
Chairman Durin.
Four.
Commissioner Ballard, four. Commissioner Longi.
Four.
Commissioner Lefakis.
Four.
Commissioner Lad.
Four.
Commissioner Gregory.
Four.
Commissioner Drayner.
Four.
Six, four, none against, and no abstentions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, seven.
Sorry, excuse me, seven.
Seven, four.
I'll make a motion to approve SPR 1624, site plan review to locate a long-term storage container at 375 North Maple Street for six months, property located in an R-44 District, MAP 78, Lot 13, Kenneth Fikounas, applicant owner, with the proviso that the assistant town planner is authorized to.
The additional condition.
Okay, subject to the.
Do you want to read what I have?
How many conditions is it going to be? Subject to the, one, two, three, well, there's several, lot, one, two, three, four, five, renumbered, six, seven.
I've got.
Thirteen.
So I've got 12, and I think the one what we've actually just discussed is actually, would modify the end of the added one at the back, because it's, this approval shall be valid for six months, expiring on December 3rd. Container must be removed immediately upon.
Okay, so subject to the 12 conditions after renumbering in a memorandum from Rachel Blatt dated May 30th, 2014, with the modification of the 12th condition, that was number 20, to indicate that a assistant town planner is authorized to approve an extension beyond the six-month period, that's if necessary.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion? You have any problems with the conditions?
Sounds good, thank you.
No hearing, no discussion, I'll take the roll.
Chairman Durin.
Four.
Commissioner Ballard, four. Commissioner Longi.
Four.
Commissioner Lefakis.
Four.
Commissioner Lad.
Four.
Commissioner Gregory.
Four.
Commissioner Drayner.
Four.
Seven, four, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you.
Thank you. 1626, second driveway cut, existing residence.
Okay. Just naming, naming an address.
Police had no, no comments. Engineering had concerns, driveway at least 20 feet long, so the parked cars will then have to overhang sidewalks. And the finding is that it's consistent with the neighboring properties, too.
Question, under traffic safety, you indicate no comments have been received yet, but you were trying to get some before June 3rd. Did you get any traffic safety comments?
I was not able to, in the course of this week, it did not happen, but we can add it in as a condition to just touch base with them and see if, make sure that they have no concerns.
Another condition.
There was a project like this, just two houses down, not too many years ago, so There was a project like this, just two houses down, not too many years ago, so it's been through this process once bef, the street has gone through a few of these.
That's what I asked.
Right, but we'll take it to the town, to the traffic safety officer.
I had a couple of questions, but did you want to present first, or?
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Elka Yapple, and I live on 37 Prospect Street.
Okay.
Yes, and we would like, actually, because we're planning on renting out 39 again, and we're running always in the problem that in the wintertime, our renter has to go over the side curb, and he ripped off his muffler before, and I was so many trouble with it, or flat tires, and when he parked on the street, he got the mirror ripped off, and all kind of stuff happened, so we said now is the perfect time because we getting those new sidewalks, and we were talking, my husband and I, and kind of like, that would be awesome if you could add that on, so we would have not that problem in the future.
So, my question was, I drove by today, and I did see the road was being done, but we didn't really have a width, was it gonna be for one car?
It's for one car.
Okay, one car, that, then answered one question, so, like, 12 feet, 10 feet?
Well, yeah, what if the police gets two, that's why the engineer recommended...
Twenty.
Twenty.
Okay, well, that's what I was...
So, we'd have to meet, huh?
That's the depth.
Twenty foot depth.
It was the depth, not the width, right, he did not, he did not specify.
I thought you were talking depth.
So, because that was the question, and the depth was also my question, because I noticed the fence was there, and...
Right now, it's 21 feet.
To the fence?
To the fence.
Okay.
We measured it as 21 feet, but I know that we spoke to the engineering department, and is it, if we have to, we would move also the fence back, if we would have to.
And I just felt like, after talking about this Thompsonville zoning study, we're trying to push the cars a little bit back to the houses versus, I looked at the space, and it almost looked like if the car was parked, it would just almost make, you know, it'll still be hanging out in the front, in, you know, the sidewalk, so I was thinking if we could push it back, I would think it would work better for the...
It was actually our intention that we're gonna make a gate, that we can actually, right now, it is actually completely closed, but our intention before was anyways to open it up, that we also had access, because he has also a back porch, so that the car could access also from the, what we have on our side, we wanted to do this on...
The other.
So, would you be paving then, much more than 20 feet beyond the fence or the gate? Would the car go past the gate, or?
Yes, we actually have a lot of shoulder stone, or whatever, I mean, we have a lot of rocks where we actually wanted to place on the other sides behind the fence.
So, how far back from the edge of the, front edge of the property would this space be where a car could pull in, would it go back 30 feet, 40 feet?
Oh, we really didn't work that out in the details yet, but...
Would it go back far enough so you could park two cars there?
Probably at least that we can have one car definitely inside.
If you made it deep enough, it would, could accommodate two cars in tandem, is that also what you might be thinking of or not?
We could do that, too, because this site belongs to the renter, so it's actually not what we're using, so whatever we could add on, it's not a problem.
Maybe say it had to be behind the front building line, back, and that would be agreeable, I think, the way our new parking standard is, would make you happy, and then it's not on the street, you know, in the front of the house.
In fact, if you look at Exhibit 3, the cars and your next-door neighbor are further, further in than they would be if they parked right up against your fence, that's what it looks like. This is one of the photographs that you submitted in Exhibit 3, the house next to yours, to the right of your, and left of yours, has, shows cars that are quite far beyond, in beyond the sidewalk, which is good, so I'm wondering if that, if you would be doing something similar, as far as being further in from the sidewalk, same, same depth as that driveway?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know what that means as far as a condition, but...
I, I would say that the way to write it would be that the car has to be behind the front building line.
That car there is...
Yeah, the ones in the picture aren't, they're maybe halfway.
I mean, in this case, I mean, with our neighborhood, it is almost impossible, I mean, that house next to us, who gets now driveway granted, because he doesn't have one, has only 15 feet, so in our case, actually, we actually pretty good so far with our cars, because I know that we're gonna get taken two feet away from our line to do the sidewalks, so he will be actually ending up at 15 feet, so for them will be even harder than for us to accommodate, I think, with our 21 feet, and even with moving in the fence.
Hmm, okay.
So, you'd be putting trap rock there?
Mm-hmm.
So, once again, you're contemplating not moving the fence that fronts the street, but putting a gate in it that would be wide enough for a car to pass through?
Yes.
Okay, so then that shouldn't be a problem, to have the car up to the building line, and since we don't have a width, I'm thinking maybe 10 feet, but...
So, I would suggest, I would say just the one car width, and then...
Yes.
As approved by John, since the engineering department is, is doing the cut itself.
Make it two car lengths.
Yeah, is there a concern about going so far back, you gotta have two cars, is that a concern, three cars, is that a concern? No.
No, not usually, because that was what we were trying to get for our district.
That's right, that's right.
So, I think that would be better for her, and better for the aesthetics.
Right, it's, I think the width, if you can keep the width narrower, and keep the cars further back.
The depth, maximize the depth.
You get them more spaces without, you know...
Right, okay.
And still keep them green.
How should we do that, leave that to the town engineer, or?
Yes, I would say, the town engineers is, are doing the, will do the cut itself, because they're laying new everything on that road.
Yeah, but what's the width, does he, would he set the width, or?
Yeah, I would say, well, I would say that you guys would say that, the commission would say that it is one car width.
Okay.
A one car width driveway, that way, whatever the specific, I mean, because I don't know what the turning radius is, I just looked through our regs, and it doesn't say, specify.
And the curb cut to match, okay.
One car width.
Okay.
And what's the length, two?
Make it at least, do you know how far back beyond the fence, if you open the gate, that you would put the rock down to allow cars, I mean, it wouldn't be 20 feet, or beyond the gate, or?
I mean, I would say behind the fence, another car could fit there, otherwise it will end up in the yard.
Yeah.
I mean, in the middle of the yard, and I don't, I really would not appreciate that they're gonna have...
At least two car lengths.
Two cars, yeah.
And then, the other thing is that is, I mean, I think where, the engineering and everyone, I think, may even be that the police get involved, is if you're blocking the public sidewalk, that basically, but if you have a small car, if you have a compact car, it's not going to do that, if you have a larger vehicle, that's the tenant's, then, then you definitely need the length, so if it's two car lengths, that gives you the space that if you've got a big car, you definitely can fit it, if you've got two little cars, they're definitely gonna fit.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So, that would be general condition?
Any other further questions?
No.
Okay, do you, have, well, do you have any problem with the conditions, have you seen, or she, they gone over the conditions with it?
16, 16 conditions.
There's, so, have we added 16 conditions?
Plus another one about the length and width, 16 plus another one about width and length of the space.
Okay, 17, there'll be 17 conditions.
Right, and this would all get, I mean, the work is, again, the work is being done through the engineering department.
Do you have any problems with the conditions? Okay.
I would recommend, do we want to take out the bond pieces again, since?
Yes.
Bond piece, whereas, which one was that?
Take them out, yes.
Or, I'm not sure, because the, because it's for the cut, it's not for the driveway, it's for the cut, so the driveway cut, again, since that work is being done by the...
The town's doing that, so she shouldn't have to bond it, what, what item number was the bond thing?
It's items seven and eight.
Okay, so, we would be taking out seven and eight?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not going with 15 conditions, okay.
And nine?
Nine. As-built plans.
And then the A2 as-built, I'm, I mean, John's doing the work, so we should, it'll be on the...
Oh, he's doing it?
Well, yeah, it is a town, it's part of, basically, the roads program is, is reconstructing the entire street, so everyone's cut that already exists, they're re-establishing, so this is to establish one at this location.
Right.
Okay.
We're not reviewing the driveway itself, or what the surface is, that's not part of this application.
Correct, it's just the cut.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay.
I don't know, anything else should be out of there?
So...
C of O, I need a certificate of occupancy, number 10, is that?
She need a building, she needs, yeah, she needs...
That should probably, that could probably come out, too, because they already are there.
Yeah.
Okay, project review, 11 should come out, too, right?
Right.
Because it's a town project to make the cut.
So, it'd be set, so conditions prior to certificate of compliance would be seven, just that the as-built gets filed into our records, so that would come from the town engineering department to show that the cut was done. Number 12 would be...
Well, if she does a driveway, she's gonna have to...
But we're not approving the driveway, though, we're just approving the cut.
Yeah, that's not...
How about building permit, 14, do we need 14? There's no building permit, right?
Nope. Again, I present, I'm presenting it all, and then, yeah.
Why do we need five, or six, or any of those?
Really, yeah.
It's your application for a curbs, cut.
The town's gonna do, that the town's gonna do.
So, really, do you need any conditions for her?
They're not gonna do that before they issue permits, because the town's not taking out permits.
Right. So, it might just be the general ones, that the application is for the specific use in structures, the project shall be constructed in accordance with the plan that was shown, and again, understanding that that's the one car length, and I think we need to put that explicitly in.
Mm-hmm.
All construction authorized shall be completed, that goes away.
All you've given her is a permission for a curb cut that she's not doing.
Right, 15, 15 is gonna be completed by the town, so she has no control over...
Curb cut for her property.
So...
But there's nothing for Peter to sign on there, right?
That's right.
Yep, so we can cut those, too, I mean, yeah, yeah, there's, I mean, as we go through this, we're gonna get more nuance the longer on here.
The only thing she's gonna have to do is get approval for the driveway.
Right, and the driveway permit will go through the engineering department, so...
Right, that's not our...
Yeah, they just need your permission to allow that to be done.
But we just needed the width, the length, and...
We're just approving the curb cut.
So, are there any conditions?
So, I think, yes, that number 12 would be that the approval for this, is for the specific use in...
Well, yes, the condition is on the width and the length.
Okay, so we'll add it to 12, we'll have one condition, number 12, with width and length added?
Uh-huh.
All right.
So, I would have 12, I would just have one and two, so one being, what, wasn't it formerly 12, two being what was formerly 13, this project shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with reference plans, which is...
So, what do we got left for this, conditions?
So, we've got two, and then, I don't know if you want to keep it separate, but driveway shall be, project shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with the reference plans, I would say that we add to that, then either three, or as, you know, continuing on from number two, driveway cut shall be one car width.
Now, why would we...
Way cut, the driveway itself.
Driveway shall be one car width.
Two car lengths.
Two car lengths.
And two car depth, two car length.
And well, that's the new number two, which used to be the old 13.
So, what do we got now, just two?
Two.
Two conditions.
Okay.
Because the width, the width of the curb cut is gonna be controlled by the town.
Right, so that's what we're saying, that you, as a part of this application, that you're saying that you want it to be the one, and not two car width.
One car width, yeah, and the driveway's one car width, so you got three conditions?
I've got it as two.
Touch one car width, drive, the driveway itself is gonna be one car width, and...
And two car lengths.
Two lengths.
So, three?
Yep.
Make it three, all right.
Yeah.
Did that, you follow?
See, we narrowed down the...
No. Okay, so, just to...
The conditions.
I'm sorry, I'll be honest.
So, you're not having any problems, right?
Okay.
We're making it, try to make it easier for you, not harder, let's put it that way.
So, to just reiterate, join us...
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve SPR 1626, site plan review to add a second driveway cut at an existing residence, property located at 3739 to 39 Prospect Street, in the R-33 district, MAP 24, lot 148, Jay Apple, applicant owner, this approval is subject to conformance with the application record, and three conditions, condition number one, that the drive cut be the width of one car, as determined by the town engineer, that the driveway that, that will be constructed beyond this drive cut be also one width of a car, and that its length be two car lengths from the property line, front property line.
Do we want the ones that we had, and they're, this approval is subject to the, is for the specific use in structure identified in the application, I think we want to keep that.
Okay, in addition, so those three conditions, plus a fourth condition that is the same as condition, general condition 12, in a memo from Rachel Blatt dated May 30th, 2014, that's four.
And the traffic safety?
And then...
And a fifth condition, that, that this approval is subject, subject to a letter to the file, to our file from the traffic safety officer, indicating that he has no concern with this.
Now, the others had waivers, this one does not need one?
It being a driveway cut and a engineered drawing, I don't believe that, but can I, I just want to verify that I got all of that.
Yep.
She, listen, because I'll ask you again, since we killed all the other conditions, whether they, you agree to the conditions.
So, how many feet is that gonna be with the two car length, because like Rachel said, I mean, if we have a small car, how do I...
Well, we could say 30.
Say 30 feet.
So, our standard parking space, can I explain?
Yeah, but right now, it's 20, it's 20, right?
So, our standard parking space is 18 depth, 18 feet deep, so if you were to do 36, that would get you...
Two.
Have to go into the, and require, basically, that you go, add the gate, and give some depth to this.
Okay.
Is that what you want?
I mean, we have nothing behind that fence.
Right, so let's do the...
I'll modify my motion to indicate the, the condition regarding length, which was number three, I think, to be 36 feet from the property, front property line, in length, the driveway.
Because she doesn't have to do it, but she can do that.
Right, again, the material, all that, it's a driveway.
She's a pro, I want you to come back and ask, anyway.
So, okay, so...
Let's not make a mountain out of, all right, the curb cut.
All right. I've got one, I'm gonna repeat in Allen's order, one, driveway cut shall be one car width, drive, number two, driveway itself shall be one car width and 36 feet in length from the property line, which is our two car length, number three, this approval is subject to a letter from the traffic safety officer.
To our files, yeah.
Yeah, a letter to the file. Number four, this approval is for the specific use in structure identified in the application, any change in the nature of the use or the, or the structure will require new approvals from the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission.
So, it's four conditions.
Number five, this approval shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with the reference plans.
Sounds good.
Any problems with that, those conditions? No, okay.
Is it a second?
Second.
The motion's made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Chairman Durin.
Four.
Commissioner Ballard, four.
Commissioner Longi.
Four.
Commissioner Lefakis.
Four.
Commissioner Lad.
Four.
Commissioner Gregory.
Four.
Commissioner Driney.
Four.
Seven, four, zero, against, and no abstentions. Enjoy your new curb cut.
[laughing].
Sorry you had to go through so much to try to get it. Yes, it was, for all, okay, SPR 1627, Enfield Square entrance next to Radio Shack, is the applicant here? Oh, okay, fine.
Yes, yes, there is an applicant.
Okay.
I just, I guess...
Well, the commission wanted to hear him, because when initially we heard it, it was gonna be the facade for Radio Shack, and that's not what it is.
Arthur Woolzac, representing Enfield Square, 90 Elm Street.
Okay, just tell, tell the commission what it is you're gonna do.
Well, they're just gonna remove the existing cedar roofing material that's on the southwest minor mall entrance near Radio Shack, and just replace it with a standing seam metal roofing, put a underlayment, you know, water and ice shield, that's it.
And the color was, the color was a sky blue, I guess.
Yes, correct.
Right. Questions for the applicant?
Would the shape or dimensions of the structure be any different, the, the only pictures we see are a flatter roof, but it would be the same shape?
No, as we discussed with Rachel, there's no framing, no physical appearance, exactly the same.
Okay.
Rip the old roofing off, replace it with a new one.
See, that wasn't, that wasn't the, well, at least what I thought it was gonna be.
But I just had one question.
Sure.
Because of the way the metal is, how does it wrap to the top, since it's a flat front that it's going on, does the metal go over the top?
They have a metal cap.
Oh, it's a metal cap, okay.
Yeah, I think it's, if you look, I don't know if you have the sheet from the contract, it should be stated in there to install metal cap also.
Okay.
Okay.
From J.D. Ribbit.
J.D. Ribbit.
Item three, furnished install firestone, UC14 standing seam metal roof, including new cap.
Oh, okay.
So, it's pretty...
Three, there we go.
Oh, I see it, okay.
Okay.
Standard, you see Home Depot and all the other centers, same thing.
Okay.
Color is just probably different, I mean, a lot of them might be green and stuff.
Sky blue.
Sky blue was because it's a soft color, so it wouldn't be obnoxious looking.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I'll make a motion to waive the full submissions requirements of section 9.10.2 because the commission finds that the information is not necessary in order to decide on the application's conformance with these regulations.
Second.
Second.
Call the rule. No discussion on a waiver. All right, call the rule.
Chairman Durin.
Four.
Commissioner Ballard, four. Commissioner Longy.
Four.
Commissioner LaFicus.
Four.
Commissioner Ladd.
Four.
Commissioner Gregory.
Four.
Commissioner Jordan.
Four.
Seven, four, zero against, and no abstentions.
Before I get into the conditions debacle, are there things that need to be removed out of this one as well?
I would say, do you want signed plans of this? I mean.
It's just a roof change.
Well, this is, so this is where we are on facades, that it's very clear in the design districts that facades come to you guys. Past practice has shown that facade materials come to you, but in the regs, it's really kind of a unclear thing. So it's one thing that I want to get through to the town attorney because we need a final say on this about what constitutes a facade change, what constitutes a footprint change, you know, make that a clear distinction. So with this one, I'm, I mean, it's.
Okay.
I'm not sure what else.
On this one, I don't think it's necessary, myself. I mean.
They're not changing the facade.
They're not changing the footprint, nothing on this, they plan changes.
And because we can actually see this, we have really good pictures on this of what is actually happening. So.
All we do is take it back and strip it off and put metal on.
The plan doesn't change, the, the air changes.
Yeah, we're just interested in appearance and color and.
Right, and that's what we needed word on the town attorney from is, you know, if it's not the design district, what constitutes a facade change versus not, versus where is the commission's role? So until we get that, we're following past practice, but we will be working towards that resolution.
But the question is, do we need all these?
Do we need, do we need signed plans on this? I don't.
Are the kids, I don't think so.
No.
No, I wouldn't say. I mean, it said, all it is is just changing the material, that's all it's doing.
That's all it is.
We have what I think we need.
Cut and dry, really, it's.
Oh, yeah, I know.
So I would say conditions prior to permits. I don't think there's a preconstruction meeting needed.
Nope. Don't guys do the roofing job? It's a building permit.
But he could have done it like the restaurant with the red and the blue or orange.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Yep, yeah, we do need to see.
Yeah, this was good.
Yeah.
Right, so yes, we have everything we need, we do not need signed plans, we're going to take this as, as our approval and then send them the approval letter.
Administrative approval, yeah, really. This shouldn't even, this shouldn't even be SPR, but I, to me, it was presented to us as a facade change for Radio Shack, and we thought it was a major entrance at a major store out there, and it's not.
But if it had come in with, you know, purple polka dots on pink, you know, we'd want to.
Well, we asked for the color.
Right.
If we'd known it was a roofing change, we would have just asked to see the color.
Yeah.
But that was explained in the, actually, the town manager, he dropped the ball on us and sold it to attorney. He just didn't get back to us. That's why we're here, it's just didn't make any sense.
These things take time, unfortunately, so.
No, no, this is not, this is just a straight roofing job.
All right, so let's get rid of what we don't need, right now.
Shouldn't have gotten this far.
And move on.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's not your fault, it's just the town attorney should have got back to us.
The other problem is trying to correct it, too, so.
Yeah, but I do want to, for the town attorney's sake, just say that, you know, they've got a lot, and we will get an answer, I apologize that it's taking time.
So which condition should remain, maybe that's a better way to go at it.
We need any of them.
Yeah, maybe none.
Need any of it, I don't think.
I don't think you need any conditions. All we do is approving the color of a facade.
And the material, color and material.
Yeah, just replacement material.
Change of material, and that's all.
So I would say that numbers twelve and thirteen still apply, just like in the last one? And that everything else basically, and then maybe the building permit within a year, but I think you guys are ready to go on that as well.
Well, yeah, but it still is down there.
Yeah.
If you look at some of the old ones on this type of thing, they were always short, and they weren't this long. That's why you can't always use a boilerplate, you got to write it specifically for the job.
If you're going to do twelve and thirteen, I was leaving fourteen, that doesn't include signage, that's kind of.
Seventeen, if they have to inspect it, obviously for the roof, they're going to have.
That's on the building permit side, it's.
That's not us.
So what's left?
There shouldn't be probably three or four.
General conditions, twelve, thirteen, fourteen?
Twelve, thirteen, four. Yes.
Change them to one, two, three.
Yep.
So, all you have are general conditions?
Three of them. All right, here we go. Get into the page. To make a motion to approve.
Did we vote on the waiver?
Yeah, we did the waiver. SPR sixteen twenty-seven, site plan review to replace roof material at Enfield Square entrance next to Radio Shack, property located at Ninety Elm Street in a BR district, map forty-three, lot sixteen, Centro Enfield LLC, applicant owner. In a memo dated by Rachel Blatt, Assistant Home Planner, May thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, with three general conditions.
Second.
Do you want to name what the ones, the numbers were before?
Okay, the numbers previous were twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and now they're one, two, and three.
Did I get a second?
I have a second.
Okay, a second, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? Rule called.
Chairman Durin.
Four.
Commissioner Ballard, four. Commissioner Longy, four. Commissioner LaFicus.
Four.
Commissioner Ladd.
Four.
Commissioner Gregory.
Four.
Commissioner Jordan.
Four.
Motion carries, seven, four, none opposed and none abstained. This usually would have come in with you and saying, you have an application, and they would have, and we would have said, well, let's see the color, and what the material, and that would have been a.
So again, we got to work towards our modification process, because we don't have anything in writing yet, and we really need to beef it up, so in the fall, that's going to be the top priority. And then to get some information, again, from the town attorney's office and really solve this issue.
And not to drag it on, but maybe we could have even a subcommittee? Like, I know the council has subcommittees for things.
Well, we've had subcommittees, too.
We've had subcommittees.
We always end up in a problem with the town attorney.
But that might be a suggestion that you might offer, if, since you are overloaded and the department is overloaded.
Well, the procedure to get to the town attorney with a question is a problem.
We, I have to, I mean.
I can't call.
But if you had a subcommittee and presented it to the subcommittee.
It's a matter of finding time even for me to write it all up perfectly, and.
Or you can ask for help, and we could, and say, and call me and say, will you set up a subcommittee, maybe that's a good idea, we can help you with some of this.
Yeah, I'm not sure, yeah.
If anybody's got time.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'd be willing to.
Do the research and.
Yeah, because then we could look at this stuff, bring it back to the board, and this is what we think.
And that might be a solution to our other issues regarding the village residential, if maybe we do a subcommittee, each subcommittee reports back on a particular item.
Well, really, we haven't had full meetings when we've had the workshops, so.
They're almost a subcommittee.
They're acting like a subcommittee. Sometimes it's tough to go. Thank you, sorry to have you.
Thanks for coming.
His name is Chairman.
Yes.
You don't need to listen to that, this question.
Okay.
I just, I can't stand this chest pain anymore. I gave the.
Okay, I'll ask Nick to fill in as, calling the roles. Okay, administrative approval? What do you, go ahead.
These are, it makes me a little wacko. Okay, so where we are with this project, this is the Connecticut Mulch Project at what is now thirty-six Mullen Road, it was established as an address, this is the new location that was before the board in the fall of two thousand and thirteen. What they've submitted to us is a list of things that have been changed as a result of their ASBIL, as a result of field conditions. We have the email here that has eight items on it that have all changed in relation to the, to the building. There is, there are a few other things that have to be accomplished before they can get the, their certificate of occupancy in addition to having this review of the modifications. And those things are in the works, so that's, you know, dealing with the grading around the berm, that is, I have heard from the applicants that that is done, and the Class D compilation plan, which is a condition of their approval.
I'm sorry, would you repeat what you had before, the berm, you said?
Right, so we have heard from the applicants that they have finished the construction of the berm and taking out of the driveway at the edge, but I think the applicants are here, and they can probably give a little bit more explanation about where they are in the process and what changed on site as a result of those field conditions.
Now, this had created some concern, which we apologize for, and Rachel is apologized for because it was dated or mis-signed up on the internet, I guess. I know Mrs. Mullen, so it's a concern and some of the consignment. Okay.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We have prepared an ASBIL for the work that's been completed at the site, which now has an address of thirty-six Mullen Road, and we submitted this about a month ago to the zoning office, and we received last week an indication that the ASBIL shows some minor deviations from what was shown on the site plan, and that we needed to come to the commission to determine what, what the approval process was for that. So let me just go through what those are quickly. This is the overall plan, as you can see here, the area that's shaded is the impervious millings that were done prior to us coming in with the application, as part of, there was a violation with this, and so none of that's changed. So the air, the limit of this activity is still the same, what we're just, what we're talking about is what's happened within this area here in the center where the buildings were proposed. And we are not, there have been no modifications to the approval for the berm, any, we're asking for any modifications on plantings, anything of that nature, so just, this just relates to the physical structures that have been constructed within that, that area of the existing impervious area. So, the building proposed was an L-shaped building, it's essentially exactly the same size and exactly the same location as what was approved, and I think that's the primary issue why we felt that, that there really was no modification, because this primarily centered around was this building, that's where the noise was going to be generated, that was the concern. This is, we staked it to make sure it got in exactly the right location, which it is. It's three hundred feet from the street and five hundred and fifty feet from the property line to the west. But there are some minor changes, kind of accessory to the building, around the building, and I'll go through those with you. First, we showed an in-feed conveyor coming into the building, in which the logs would be loaded onto this conveyor belt, and that is slightly shorter and in a slightly different location. I summarized these in an email, so I'll refer to that, dated May twenty-eighth. The in-feed is nine feet further to the south this way, and it's ten feet shorter in length. So essentially, as the manufacturer for this equipment began to fine-tune the layout and the schematics of this, they found that they didn't need the full length, and so they shortened it by ten feet. Underneath the entrance is a concrete pad, and the staff had indicated there were some additional concrete pads, but the entire area is impervious, so whether it's a concrete pad or millings, it makes no difference to drainage, no difference to impervious coverage from a zoning standpoint, so it didn't seem, in our mind, to be anything of noteworthy, but in an attempt to be thorough, I noted everything. Okay? So there is a concrete pad under there, and the reason for that is this conveyor, as it comes in, has to hold a substantial amount of weight, so this provides a low bearing strength for that, as that comes into the, to the building there. Number three, the, coming off the side of this conveyor is another conveyor, right before it goes into the building, where the bark, the bark that gets shaved off comes, gets brought back out of the building, before it was shown off the corner of the building, and they actually constructed it right on the corner of the building. Again, just sort of, this is accessory areas, there was a bin shown on the approved site plan, and there was no bin constructed, there are, as last time was out, there are some concrete blocks that are set up as a push wall, so that as the, as the bark drops onto the floor, they can be scooped up and pushed against, pushed against something, so that, but there was, there was no poured concrete structure in this area, so that's a, it's a deviation, but nothing that should cause any concern. The site plan showed a bin area, that's number four, there's no bin area. This, number five, the site plan showed a single woodchip conveyor leaving the building to the south and going to a woodchip bunker, that was indicated to be a covered woodchip bunker, and, and so, as, and then there was also an area of open that were, that were indicated for fines, so as the woodchips, there's a, there's a, it's like a sieve that kind of separates, based on the size of the chip, so the finer stuff gets discharged into this area. So what was once more of a bigger area was subdivided into two smaller areas, so we have, we have two bin areas, there are thirteen by thirteen and a seventeen by twenty-two, but all of this is within the area that was previously approved as a bin area, so again, it seemed like nothing noteworthy.
Dana, those other two new bins, are they covered as well?
These two bins are not covered, they're, they've got concrete walls on three sides, they're open on the top and open on the front. In fact, all these bins are open on the front, but these first two, just as the site plan indicated, are open. So these are not covered. And the reason for the covering was the, the primary product goes into the covered area in order to keep it dry, because that was important for the, how it was processed. So this area is covered. So that brings us next to the covered woodchip bunkers, and this is probably the biggest change, deviation from the plan, the, the plan showed a thirty-two by forty covered bunker and a second thirty-two by forty covered bunker that said future. So the idea is, we didn't know when they were going to build the second one, they decided to build them both at the same time. So it's eighty feet, as the plan was approved, only thirty feet wide, so it's actually two feet narrower than what was approved. And, and it's almost five feet further to the south, so it did get shifted slightly. And the reason for that, again, is with these conveyors, they weren't, the dimensions of them weren't precise, and once the final design of that, that whole conveyor system was determined, it kind of set the location of those, of those bunkers, so it got shifted five feet to the south this way. But again, still within the impervious area, there's been no change to the limit of the area of the activity. The, in addition, a four-foot concrete apron was installed along the front of all of the bins, both the covered and the uncovered, that was not shown on the plan, that's, because you have equipment going in to these to remove the material, an apron provides some protection and stability for that, like you'd see on any garage door, you see a concrete apron there.
That apron would then only be, be only two feet added from the original.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Thirty plus four, thirty-four is the vertical, okay?
Yeah, so it's an extra two feet within the interior area where all this activity is taking place. Again, the, the area around this is, is all log storage, and, and so that's, that's what which kind of blocks some of the view of a lot of this, because of the log piles, in addition to the berm, provides some, some screening, in a sense. So that's number seven, and then finally, number eight, there is a scale that we showed on the, on the site plan that is, in this location, the trucks come in and they weigh in the scale, and apparently, this was an oversight on our part, the scale was not complete at the time, it didn't have ramps going up to it, and so they added a ramp coming in and a ramp going out to this scale, so scale's exactly the same, they just added a ramp on both ends of it, so that the trucks can go up and back down again.
What was the ramp made out of, Dana?
Concrete. There's concrete bollards at the, at the corner, they're painted yellow, so that they clearly see where they're supposed to travel, and there's some metal platform stairs that were added as well to the, to the side of this. So it was completed, it was, and that was sort of an oversight on our part, we didn't, weren't focused on that because we thought it was already there, we realized that it really wasn't complete.
So a couple of other ASBILs, if you will, just to be complete, are a metal platform to the west of the scale, and also, it looks like metal stairs and a platform to the east of the scale, those are a ninth and tenth one, if you will?
Yeah, I may not, yeah, I didn't mention those specifically, but yeah, these platforms as well.
Thank you.
Were added. As well, and I think I mentioned this, but this is more of a utility issue, but there's two concrete pads in the front of the building here that the, that the electrical bolts are on, so that's where CLMP and the electrician wanted them located. So, when we submitted the ASBILs, we noted that the, the items that had yet. So when we submitted the as-bills, we noted that the, the items that had yet, yet to be completed, we didn't note these specifically, because frankly, we, we didn't consider them to be anything of consequence, but staff wanted to make sure that you agree. So that's why we're here.
Couple of questions, then. Beyond those eight, or nine, or 10, or 11, then there are a couple of paragraphs beyond that that I was concerned about. And one of them, I think Rachel indicates, has been taken care of. The last one indicated that you might be delaying the removal of a portion of the berm that was agreed to in December. Rachel indicates that actually you went ahead and did that?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, originally, our preference was to wait on, on modifying this, this berm. The purpose for modifying the berm was to, to provide the drainage to be able, to be able to get out if it overflows. The covert actually flows to the north, but the concern was that if it backs up, now with the berm there, it would block the, block the flow and, and potentially keep more water on this side than, than, than it was before the berm was there. So this well was designed to allow a, a relief for that, so that the water could get, get, get around. We're not, we're not asking for any modification of that. We're going to do exactly what's, and, and the work actually has been completed, and we're in the process of as-billing that now, so.
I see you seeded it. So basically, what we see here is that you were talking about a delay, but actually you've done it, so that's no longer a request or a, or even a note.
Correct, correct. Some of that I, we were initially asking for, this was the, the modification that, that was proposed.
Yep.
And we're going to do exactly what.
And you already have done, as far as.
And we, we have, and we're in the process of as-building it, confirm that it's, that it's spot on, that what it needs to be.
And the other concern I had was the paragraph above that, that mentioned the Class D compilation plan. Is that the same thing as what you submitted as a composite image? Are they the same thing, or is that something different?
This is the, this is the Class D compilation plan. We had initially submitted a plan of just the 70 Mullen Road site, which is one of the conditions of the approval for, for this site, which, which we did. And staff said that they wanted to see both sites on a single plan, so we revised it and, and submitted this, showing, showing both sites together.
The other question I had on that same paragraph was, some mentioned that, that you weren't going to be submitting GIS drawings of the wetlands, because they are inaccurate. And I'm just wondering, what would those, I think you did in December have, or September have wetlands, so what would they look like, and why not submit them now?
Sure. Well, the, this is a, this is a compilation plan, meaning that it's a compiling of available information, available mapping. It's not a field survey going out today with, with field survey to locate it, as, as it is today, but taking available mapping and, which includes aerial photos, which is what, what we primarily used. So it's, it's accurately reflecting what's out there today, but not to, with, within inches type of, type, type of accuracy. So, the pro, and so, for a compilation plan, available wetland mapping would be appropriate to add, and that's what staff was saying. We have available wetland mapping that's added. Our objection was that, that that wetland mapping is not accurate. The wetland mapping on the town GIS shows the wetlands going across Mullen Road, shows a, a lot of these areas as wetlands and they're not. So, so from, as professionals, as, the, the surveyors, I'm not a surveyor myself, but the surveyors are saying, it's, it's not appropriate to show inaccurate information on a compilation plan. If it's, if it, if it, if it looks reasonably accurate, we would show it. So that was the, the concern, and we said, you know, we'll meet with staff, we'll decide, you know, what needs to be done, but, but we didn't want to show something that, that wasn't correct.
But in September or December, did you show wetlands maps? You did not in either case?
No, we, we do show wetlands over on the 36 parcel, and I do have those on the as-bill.
Oh.
Tracy may have.
I are.
Tracy may have.
So it's, there are two different, there are two different pieces here with the wetlands.
Yeah.
There's, they have, they're providing two different sets of maps. One is the Class A2 map, which is their as-bill, and that's the highly detailed version that you guys have seen through the last proposal where the wetlands are shown. And then the Class D is, is what was agreed to in December as this extra condition, which is the two parcels on one map.
Okay. We, we don't see the Class A2 now, today. We saw that in September. Do you have it to show us there, or?
That's, that's what this is.
Okay.
This is the, this is the Class A2.
Yep.
Survey of the 36 Mullen Road site. The site was, was the subject of the, of the public hearing.
So I saw that, I had two concerns. Why are our maps inaccurate? And then the second concern is, if you did show, if we had accurate maps, would anything of your as-bills change your relationship to the, the wetlands? And specifically, the only thing I can see that might do that would be the ramps on the, to the south. The 51-foot extra ramp, does that come any, does that encroach upon the wetlands, because it wouldn't have been for or not?
Because, because that whole area was already impervious, was already disturbed.
That's already been covered.
We're well within that envelope. We haven't come any closer to any wetlands.
Thank you.
You would, let me allow Tracy, please, to talk, she's been waiting.
Thanks, I appreciate it. I think we've now, in the last moment, clarified one of the first questions, which was, the interpretation of the condition that was in there was different from the applicant to the staff. And our read was that they needed to show both of those parcels. So that was something that, that they have now done. Upon reviewing that, first time looking at this project as zoning enforcement officer, first time looking at the 70 Mullen Road, it states that we can request very specific information if it would impact any zoning regulation-related decisions. So that's why I asked, would they be able to put wetlands? That's when we had the conversation. The wetland concern actually wasn't so much for the parcel at 36. As zoning enforcement officer, I may have some questions about 70 Mullen, but that, we agreed, needed to be handled separately. And so we can, what the plan is to allow me time to review what was actually submitted back in the past, and then hold conversations, if need be, with the applicant about the 70 Mullen Road parcel.
Yeah, we'd be open to continuing those discussions under that arrangement.
Any further questions? Anyone? So the question is, then, to allow Rachel to sign off on the as-bills.
Yes, so these are the minor, I mean, these are minor modifications to, and it's, again, looking at the building pieces, they're getting ready towards, you know, looking towards that CO, you know, are these things acceptably minor? And it's, again, those are the ones that are related to the building, 70 Mullen Road being a separate issue, the berm, and the landscaping being a separate issue as well, because those are not going to be modified.
I guess I have probably one question. If part of the approval was the Class D survey, which is basically a compilation of a bunch of different factors, and the town requires or wants wetlands on there, if they don't put the wetlands, do they meet that condition? And so that would be my only question as to.
The town, that wasn't, the wetlands request was not a specific notation in the conditions for 36 Mullins. So it was something that I, and, and as I said before, looking at the 70 Mullins, looking at some of the old maps back when that parcel was initially approved, have some questions about the footprint approved versus the footprint being used. I have not fully researched that, but I felt it would be an easy way to get some of that information, and would be within the bounds of something we could request. But if there are concerns about accuracy, and I, I don't want to hold this project up for a review of anything related to 70 Mullins.
So there are no wetlands concerns for 36, there may be for 70?
Right, and the piece, the, so Tracy and I have both actually looked at the definition of the Class D. And the Class D, as Dana pointed out, is based on what is the available information. We know that our wetlands GIS layer is generally, it's available, but generally it is an estimate. So it's, I mean, it's what's available to us. We know that this is typically why the Wetlands Commission has, if there's, if we see wetlands shown in our GIS, we say, go out and get a soil scientist to confirm. So they, there's always that step in looking at wetlands with our, with the data that we have available.
Wetlands does that, we haven't.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right, so that's where, that's why I don't think that they were using it, is that we know that they, that that has to be confirmed whenever there's a case.
Right, if we feel that there might be a concern, then we can get the Wetlands Enforcement Officer involved, and we can have those questions. So again, there may not be a concern at all. It looks like a slightly larger footprint than the old map that I reviewed, but there hasn't been time by staff to go back and check on that. So I don't want to imply that there are any problems, just due diligence to make sure, you know, we're checking on it.
So that map fulfills the condition requirement?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay. I'll make a motion to authorize Assistant Town Planner Rachel Blatt to administratively approve the as-built modifications, indicating the documents that have been presented to SPR 156702.
Second.
Any discussion? Take the role in acting secretary, I guess.
Chairman Duran?
Four.
Commissioner Longi?
Four.
Commissioner Lefakis?
Four.
Commissioner Lad?
Four.
Commissioner Gregory?
Four.
Commissioner Dreinen?
Four.
Six, four, none against, and no abstentions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And helping us work through this bill procedure.
So we have now gone through all the applications received. I think we've got a full docket for this at 19th and the July 3 meeting. It's going to be a busy, busy summer.
Will you send out, or make sure notification goes out to remind people of the meeting next week? Don't count on email, or, I don't know how else you're going to do it, both a phone call and email. Some people don't look at their email.
Yes.
And Ron doesn't get it, we know that.
I mean, I'm okay by email, but.
Yeah, just that, it helps. I want to thank everybody. This, this is a new procedure, and it was a little rocky start, and we tried to aid, I guess, the applicants.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, a little bit of misunderstanding and problems on posting.
So, and I think, again, when we, as we, as we worked through these modification proceedings and sort of set it a little bit more solidly, I think we're going to get to a point where it becomes, you know, routine for everyone, that it's part of the automatic thinking that, yes, you have to come back every, anything they change, just tell us, so we can tell you. So.
But that's why I'm really thinking there's a, a way to facilitate this. And I think if, the way is, is if there was a couple of people that were willing to go in once a week to check out what was coming in for any kind of modifications, we could decide, is it major to come to the board? Is it minor, it doesn't?
Just presenting it as a final as-bill, he did all, all of it. The way he presented it was, was concise, every last, even small or large.
Right.
And the other, and the other thing, Commissioner Longi, I'm a little concerned about maybe one or two commissioners taking action when we require actions to be taken by the entire board.
Then they can present it to the board.
I, I think this way it was handled, you had the engineer, the person changed, and he was concise in what he said and what was done.
I think the other.
It didn't take too long.
Yep.
And it gives.
Yeah, and that's why I'd like to be able to.
It puts more, if they know that this is what they have to do, they're going to be careful on the first presentation.
Yep. The other, the other general topic I think we need to address by way of policies, procedures, and routines is, what are the ground rules for calling special meetings? Should we have any? If so, then, under what circumstances? Some general guidelines, so that if someone says, why did you call a special meeting? We say, well, it's right down here in our policies, procedures, it's A, B, C, D, we did all those.
Four things are right there that I haven't.
Well, I know, but there may be others.
Right.
Beyond what we have. There may be additional routine hurdles, if you will, that we want to, we want to have in place, other than, you know, 24-hour notice, et cetera, et cetera.
And we're working towards that.
So that we can point to those. If someone says, why did you call a special meeting? Even at, whether at 7 o'clock at night, hopefully not at noon, whenever, it's an unusual circumstance, so we need to be able to say, yeah, but it was justified, because we followed our own rules. And what are those rules? We haven't determined them yet.
So we may need, I mean, we've been working, I think, so we found in the office that there was at one point, and it goes back to 1992, is that in 1992, there is a book from 1992 that says, these are our policies and procedures, administrat, like our, our office procedures. That was the last time this thing existed, when Katie was here, she was working towards a few pieces here and there, but it's been sort of scattershot. So that's one of the things that we really, I mean, that's our goal, sort of, as a department, and with Courtney and everyone, is to really sit down and, and we've started that, you know, we have the application guide, we went through, you know, we've gone through the application guide, we've got the file standards, where, you know, we're, you know, we can say, like, yes, we expect every page to be stamped. And this is where it says, that anyone working on our projects, you stamp every page.
But until then, if, if we're still operating under a 1992 set of procedures, if we are, then I would like to see them. If we're not, if we're not, then we don't have any procedures. Do we have them, or we don't? If we have them, we should see them. If we don't, then we're working on them.
And there's the bylaws.
Allow, allow me to have a special meeting, if she calls me. And the reason for the special meeting was you had people that weren't on the agenda, that were SPRs, that had to be handled, because, well, the, the street was under construction.
But some were for convenience, so they wouldn't have to sit, I mean, not all were.
It was also because this hearing, if it had taken place, probably would still be going on.
Right.
And they would have never gotten in.
So it was for.
It was to make it a convenient thing, to help people that were in a bind and wanted to get going, even, even the Moody Road project, that they would like to get a CO or get going.
And that's a valid purpose. I just think that, for the future, to avoid what happened last week, we ought to, we ought to agree on.
Well, that was in your, the choice of time and on posting.
But if we have some general guidelines we all agree on, then, then.
Well, you won't have another, you will not have another one in the daytime, it will be in the evening, it's, starting at 7:00.
So I think we're going to work towards getting it all on paper.
Yep.
And I think that's sort of where we got to start.
The notification procedure, and how you, how you construct a quorum, and who gets called, those should be written down somewhere, so we can point to them. Okay, you know, we agreed we're going to do 1, 2, 3, and 4 to schedule a special meeting, and we did it this time, so we're clear.
And then the other thing is, is Jose used to, at, you know, he used to do it at the beginning, but I think it should be done at the end of the meeting. If there's these modifications, he used to come to the board and say, do you want to see this, or should I do this administratively? And so then we could look at the stuff and.
She does that, sure she has. What's different?
Right, but now it's not being done, obviously.
Why?
Because we had these others that, you know.
Which?
Well, we had the one tonight.
That was administrative as-bill.
That was exact, that was this, that was this. I mean, that, the thing is, is that we're just trying to get it, I mean, that was exactly that. That was, they, someone came in in the last, since the last meeting and said, we need an answer.
Okay.
Here's what it is. It was not, that was not an application, that was a, we need to get a wording, we need a ruling on this. I'm not going to make that ruling.
Right.
Right.
We agreed that, you know, at least for the, at least for the current period, that you would bring any of those to us, as opposed to assuming that we would say it's okay.
And same with the, the roof thing.
And that makes sense.
I couldn't make that ruling whether or not you guys counted that as a facade. You guys had to make that choice.
We can't, we can't, or they can't contact seven people to ask if they want a special meeting or not, unless we're in a, in a session like I did tonight and had a chance.
Well, if a special meeting is called, every commissioner should be caught, when the, when the time for, and the date for the special meeting is called, all 10 commissioners should be notified, so they can attend.
No argument there.
Yeah.
No argument there.
Okay.
That's what, she's been told, and.
Because that didn't happen this time, and.
Well, that's why it was called off.
Right.
She received, and she answered me Sunday night.
Yep.
It was called off. I didn't notify all you, because I couldn't.
Sure.
My, I have a bad computer that doesn't do everything, it's slow.
But that might be one of those steps that we talked about.
Again, yeah.
General steps that we could agree, write down, and say, okay.
Already been told to do that. Notify both ways, in fact, even tonight. I've already been told to do that, notify both ways, in fact, even tonight, I, again repeated, to notify the commissioners of next week's meeting in both ways, both the phone and the TV.
I'm going to tell you, I can't make that phone call. If I'm making 10 phone calls every day, we are never going to get anywhere.
No, she's got...
I just think we need some standard operating procedures for how we call special meetings.
I know, and that's the thing we're working towards, and I got to tell you, if our last document was written in 1992, it basically is sort of out the window, we've got a whole new team, we're starting, I mean, as much as we can, but...
Well, you've added people up there, and we were depleted of people, and as people change, things get waylaid, and they're trying to do their best up there.
But see, like, I didn't, I don't know, like, there was repercussions of it. I was called and told the meeting is Monday, I can't make Monday, so I don't look at the packet.
Let's not go through that, there were errors.
What I'm saying is, is, but there's people that were making the meeting that actually looked at the packet, and so now their time was sucked up looking at that as well. So I'm just saying, it wasn't just one way, it was the other way as well.
Well, that won't happen again, I don't think...
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, we learned a lot this week, I mean, we learned a lot this week.
I would like to look at the 1992, even though it's not being used, I would like to look at it for interest, to see what kind of procedures we had back then.
Sure.
Could I?
I mean, yeah, you guys are welcome to come in and take a look at anything, as is everyone in the public. I honestly have not dug very deep in it, because it's, I mean, we're talking about an era where we didn't have the internet.
It is obsolete, but it might be instructive to look, to see what kind of procedures they had back then.
And again, I want to make this, I mean, but I want to not tackle this simultaneously to everything. We can only do so much in a week, and the two of us are here constantly.
I have a motion to adjourn, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.